I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Does this mic work? Madam City Clerk, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Mayor Jean Goss.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Edward Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Rachel Arizmendi.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Krebs was previously excused. And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, Councilmember Parkhurst will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration.
Would you please stand? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, I have two things. The first is that thirty-two years ago today, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law by then-President George H.W. Bush. So, you know, if you're like me, you think about the ADA, you think about the blue person on the sidewalk in the wheelchair. But in doing a little bit of research on the ADA, I discovered a couple of things that, you know, surprised me, that the ADA covers both mental and physical conditions, and that the conditions do not need to be severe or permanent to be considered a disability. The Equal Employment Opportunity Commission has an extensive list of things that are considered disabilities. And some of the things might surprise you, and they surprised me. You know, just some of the straightforward ones like deafness and blindness, partially or completely missing limbs, autism, cancer, diabetes, PTSD, and HIV. So, you know, as we go through our meeting tonight, I'd just ask everyone to reflect on people in their lives who are differently able than they are and think about how we can support and empower them. The second thing ties a little bit into some PTSD, and this is very recent news. So, I was made aware today that our fire department came to the rescue of two children in our community who fell into a pool and had to be taken to the hospital. And both of them, as I understand, came out without a pulse. One of them, when there was a pulse, was restored on the way to the hospital, and one was shortly thereafter. This is something, and we talked about PTSD is going to be with these brave men for quite a while. As someone whose brother spent six weeks in intensive care after a near drowning incident is something incredibly personal to me. I'd like to thank the police, the fire department, for their rapid response and for taking care of these families. My thanks, my extreme thanks goes out to them. And my best wishes goes to the family and to the children for their quick survival, or their quick recovery, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst. Okay, let's have a look at our agenda tonight. And I'd like to get a motion for approval. I think we're going to pull one of the items out of the consent agenda, item F, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll need a motion for approval with that amendment.
I move to approve the agenda as presented with a poll of item F for discussion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Also, I'd like to get a motion for approval for reading resolutions and ordinances.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. And take a look at the meeting minutes, if you haven't, I'm sure we have. I didn't have any suggestions for changes. Looking for a motion for approval or amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I provided some edits to, some recommended edits to the city clerk, some of it to clarify one of the statements I made, and then some very minor things throughout the minutes.
Thank you, you got that.
Mr. Mayor, those suggested edits were received, and they've been incorporated into the minutes.
Any others? Is there a movement, a move for approval based on the amended minutes?
I'll move to approve the amended minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have meeting minutes. Which brings us to mayor and city council reports. We are short one council colleague today, so this should be a little shorter than usual. Who wants to go first?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This time I don't have a report.
Okay, makes it even easier.
Mr. Mayor, so mine is short. Since the last meeting, I intended the Natural Resources Commission meeting, welcomed in our new commissioners. And we had two things that we talked about on the agenda, or they talked about the agenda. One was a climate action list that the commission and staff are putting together to bring forward to us. And the other was talking about water conservation. And the members of the commission were solicited, their input was solicited on enhancements to current ordinances and incentives for water conservation. That's my complete report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there was a meeting on July fourteenth, the Senior Community Commission. It was a reorganization as well as planning for the year. We now have Chair Patricia Crock and Vice Chair Marlene N. Mark, with Chair Pat Holland now is a regular commissioner. He's been chair for quite a while, on and off. So, we thank you for his service. Just a couple highlights from the meeting. The senior excursions are going to resume, so the senior community is very excited about that, I believe, in October of this year. Also, programming with the senior center has increased. There's been increased attendance. It's my understanding Chair Yoga is now busting at the seams, and they're out the front, out the doors, and they don't have enough room for it. So, it's, that's great to hear. Also, they're going to have the first senior luau this year, that's in the plan, or at least in the fiscal year. A senior art show, September second, will be an open house. And that might be an ongoing thing. And then finally, and hopefully not to conflict with one of our presenting groups tonight, but there will be a whiskey tasting, so it'll pay off to be a senior for this, possibly in November. So, those are the updates from the Senior Community Commission. Also, I did meet with, following last month's presentation from the PUSD School Board, Dr. Blanco and Lindsay Lewis, as well as our elected official Tina Fredericks. She reached out to me, and I had a meeting with her in Christian Court last week. And I extended my concerns as a Sierra Madre resident and parent and a council member regarding our voices being heard here in Sierra Madre in the Pasadena Unified School District. And she heard, she heard me. So, she's going to look for ways to integrate and have a larger voice for Sierra Madre within decisions within the Pasadena Unified School District. So, that was a fruitful meeting, and I'm happy that we were able to invite her, as well as PUSD, so we can start good lines of communication with PUSD. That's all I have.
Thank you. On the fourteenth, I had the pleasure of going to the Special Board of Trustees meeting for the library, where the topic of conversation was how can we get the ball rolling on our new library, which we receive funding for from the state. It was also kind of a double-duty meeting because we have so many new members on that board. The board chair at the time, Board Chair Gallagher, thought it'd be a great idea if we could bring in maybe a dozen or so people with a long history of the library who could maybe serve as an orientation to those members. And so, it kind of served that purpose as well. At the conclusion of the library meeting, the board did, in fact, vote to put out for an RFP for a design of the building. So, we have taken the very first step to building that new library we've all been dreaming about. So, I'm very excited to be here telling you about that tonight, and I'm sure a lot of you are as well. Yesterday, the twenty-fifth, I also had really a pleasurable meeting with the Director of Facilities for Pasadena Unified School District. How did this happen? Well, if you recall, when we had the Pasadena Unified School District Representative Tina Fredericks and staff here not too long ago, I asked her if she would be willing to join me to work together to try to open up the Sierra Madre Middle School gym for our community as a community recreational center. That next day after that meeting, she contacted me. We talked, we communicated, and she got in touch with the people in the administration of PUSD, culminating in the meeting yesterday, which our city manager, Jose Reynosa, attended, our community services manager, Rebecca Silva, attended, and our deputy city manager, Laura Aguilar, attended. The upshot of all of it is that it was very positive. He is ready to move forward on an MOU, memorandum of understanding. I proposed that we open up the gym from six to ten, Monday through Friday, and all day Saturday till ten o'clock PM. He was open to that. We still have to have more discussions, but the whole point here is to get this gym open as a source for our young people, a place for them to recreate on hot summer days and winter nights when they can't go, there's no place for them to go, to play basketball, to play volleyball, and other recreational activities. So, a lot has to happen between now and the time when that actually occurs. Certainly, when we get an MOU hammered out, it will go right to our Community Services Commission for them to have a look at and see what they want to do with it. Assuming all goes well, we're hoping that maybe we could give, open the doors for some sort of recreational activity by October. That's the goal. So, anyway, I'm very excited to be able to share that with you. It's something that's, I've been trying to do for a long time. And I want to give credit to a board member, Tina Fredericks. She actually took the ball, and she ran with it, and she gave me all kinds of support on this. Since then, I've talked to her about it, and we're hoping to put some, if we can put it together, it has to go through all these stages. But if we can put it together, we're hoping to have some kind of opening ceremony that weekend prior to it opening. We're, and so, cross your fingers, we'll see if that happens. I have some other announcements that staff has asked me to share with you. I better get my glasses on for these. I'm sure everyone is aware of the Oak Fire currently burning in Mariposa County between Yosemite and Merced. As of yesterday, sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-one acres had burned, and was only about 10% contained. Yesterday, the Sierra Madre Fire Department sent a crew there to help combat the fire. Let's keep the crew in good thoughts and wish for a safe return. God bless them. Mark your calendars and join the Sierra Madre Police Department in celebrating National Night Out on August second. There will be food, music, and fun at Memorial Park from five PM to eight o'clock that day. That's again on August second. Also, I get a, I'm, I, how am I gonna say this? I'm looking forward to hosting another Second Walk with the Mayor on August eleventh. Last time, we walked down from City Hall all the way down through the, by the Pony Field and back, gang of about eight or ten of us, and we're hoping for another turnout similar to that. It'll be on August eleventh at six thirty PM. You can sign up for it if you like at the city's website under Resident Community Wellness. And finally, the California Reserve Police Officers Association is awarding Police Officer Mitchell Thomas with the Distinguished Service Award for his thirty-eight years of service at Sierra Madre Police Department. So, kudos to Officer Thomas. That is the end of my report. Which brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. So, if you have something you'd like to share with us that is not pertinent to anything that is on our agenda tonight, feel free to come up, and I'll give you three minutes to do so. We would appreciate if you would submit a yellow comment card to our city clerk beforehand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have a number of cards for items not on the agenda. The first speaker is Jerry Mathlin, Mathlu? Sorry.
Thank you very much. The last time I was here was about twenty years ago, so. I'm here about Airbnbs. My wife and I live on Auburn, five-three-five Auburn. And right across the street on the northeast corner, I believe, two weekends ago, there was quite a large party there of about seventy people, and I believe the police had to be called. I've listened in periodically, and Airbnbs have come up from time to time, and I don't think we have an ordinance about it in town. And I certainly would hope that the council would think about doing something like that. So, I'll just digress for a second. My wife and Peggy and I are fortunate enough to spend a lot of time in Ojai, California, which is a lot like Sierra Madre. And they have a short-term rental ordinance on the books that they put in effect a couple of years ago, I think. And it's working there. You might want to think about contacting some cities that, I don't know of any other cities that have ordinances like that. But not having an ordinance on the books could affect property value. If one were to sell their home, I would think I would have to disclose that there's an Airbnb across the street, and whatever happens there, you know, happens, that could affect the value of my property. And I think when we have Airbnbs, there also can be a loss of a sense of community, a permanent residency in the town. Even a renter that's here for six months, in my opinion, is a permanent resident. But someone that's just here for a day or two, no, they're not. They don't have any vested interest in the town. I know I'm running out of time. Anyway, please consider that. Please look into what other smaller cities are doing with short-term rental ordinances. We need to, we need to get a handle on it somehow, some way. We really do. I don't think we're, I may not be accurate. I don't think we really have a clear understanding of where we're going with these short-term rentals. Last thing I want to mention, which I was, was not in my plan to talk. In my former life, I was emergency manager, disaster manager at LA County UOC Medical Center. Last time I was here, I suggested that you get a digital menu board that you could put in the window of City Hall, so when there's an emergency, a power outage, loss of water use, whatever, you can type it in and just scroll across, kind of like Linde crosses the Atlantic, and everybody knows about it at the same time. I wish, you can get a nice board for a couple thousand dollars. You're on emergency power here, obviously. You can have that board available. People can come by instead of calling into city and tying up the phones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathlin.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Verona Vazquez.
Mayor, esteemed council members. I've never been here before, so how about that? I'm the current president of the Sierra Madre Women's Club. And can you all hear me okay? All right. And I'm here just to kind of make everyone aware that we're having a big to-do in September, September twenty-fourth to be exact. Sierra Madre Women's Club, as most of you know, came to be in nineteen oh seven. And that's the same year that this city was incorporated. And so, we're working really hard to get back to that community feeling and being very involved with the community as we were way back then. And so, as we have, you know, started collaborations with various organizations and having events at different business owners' locations, and just trying to be there during COVID for our senior women, we just want you all to consider that we have a great need coming up. We are looking to raise five hundred thousand dollars because our Essex House that is, that was built in nineteen fourteen is in need of some big repairs. We have foundation falling down, and we have some, probably some not-so-safe conditions for the thrift shop that everyone loves in town. But having said that, basically, once we call or pull a permit, we're going to have to, that's a big can of worms for us, for a nineteen fourteen house. We're gonna have to do the electrical, to do the plumbing, and different other things. So, we, I invite you all right here, if you wanna please attend. But we are gonna make a really concerted effort because I feel that this is a club that's worthy of some attention in the sense of when, we're all getting older. And I've only been president for one year. I'll say it, I'm fifty-eight, but most of our, I'd say maybe sixty percent of our members are all retired. And there's a different mindset for a woman in particular to be getting older, and maybe she doesn't have kids, and maybe she doesn't have a spouse. So, our club provides friendship, support, and, and purpose. Purpose after her retirement. And so, while we're here to support all women, regardless of where they are in their journey, they, we have collaborations with the Sierra Madre Girls Softball Team. So, whether they're in their teens, whether a young woman's still working, and we have evening sessions that she can come and relax and take a load off, we're, we're here to support. And so, we are expanding our classes. We do yoga. We're gonna do more like meditation and, you know, Tai Chi and other things. So, we want to be of value, and we hope that you consider us in the future for, from support. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. In the future, if you let us know in advance, we can agendize a presentation for you. That would be great. We could get you more than three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Scott Oliver.
Hi, Scott Oliver, Carter Avenue. I wanted to address some misinformation that was stated at the last council meeting in regards to the vote on the monastery project. It's just about the misinformation. Councilman Parkhurst stated that our initiative did not allow for all-electric homes that he had been searching for. In fact, the monastery project isn't pushing all-electric homes. It's not anything we're dealing with or not dealing with. As a matter of fact, there's documentation that we have, and Mr. Frankel even stated that they're actually recommending against the option of all-electric homes. That was the first thing. The second thing was that the initiative didn't deal with wildlife. And actually, the initiative is just the first step to the Hillside's ordinance. And the Hillside's ordinance, which our nineteen ninety-four city council worked hard to get implemented, deals directly with wildlife and how development interacts with it. So, to say that our initiative doesn't deal with wildlife makes no sense. And so, I would like it clarified that it, in fact, is a major part of the development clauses in the Hillside Management Ordinance. I have several copies of the Hillside ordinance, if I could provide.
We have access to those already. Thank you.
Okay. The third thing was the design of the properties. I don't understand that situation either because it clearly states in, in the ordinance that design is a major issue in the development of properties under Hillside's management. So, to say that it doesn't deal with design is antithetical to one of the major portions of the Hillside's ordinance. Once again, I don't understand why this ordinance law that our community put into place almost thirty years ago, that all the councils between that time and this time all saw fit to support it, why this council has chosen to sidestep the ordinance which we all felt was there to protect us, and how any increase in this development clause goes through before measures by the community to at least establish that almost fourteen, fifteen hundred of us in two months' time signed our names to say, no, this isn't right. We want scrutiny. We have a law in place. We have elected officials that should represent us and support our position to have reasonable development of this property. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Gary Hood.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's so good to be back here again. I do love your shirts and everything. I'm talking about the loss of our police chief. Rod was very special. I think that you folks did a really good job of picking someone like Rod. You left one thing out. You should have had a five-year contract that he couldn't leave. He had a lot of things going on here, good. The license readers are very important, not to mention the new building, which I think could be very special for Sierra Madre. I supported the chief in that decision of looking at that building. And then, you guys got a lot on your plate. Now, you have to pick a new police chief. And I hope that you do it with the same process that you used before. I think we need someone in the department that brings new experience from other departments, who is not you, looking forward to the chief's position to move and promote somewhere else. We need someone here that wants to be here in town, someone that has experience maybe with the town and with other communities, that they can bring that experience because we need it. There's a lot of undertaking with this new building. And that new building could be very special and obviously well-needed. It's been said before that before running for council, or after you become a council member, there should be a history class about our town and what we stand for. Because that's very important. Some of us who have been in town for many years have watched this same process go over and over. When council members come up, they don't seem to really understand the community. And this is a very special community. Along the foothills here, we have a lot to deal with. I know we have a turnover. But if you get a chief that really wants to be in town, he'll stay here with a lower salary. So, I don't think the salary is as big a deal. You just haven't been looking at the right places, maybe. And it's nice not to worry about lawsuits from the public. As the church and New Urban West, you've been always saying, oh, we gotta worry about that lawsuit. Well, it's real nice that New Urban West is gonna pay for any lawsuits coming from the community against the council. So, I can understand when you're saying, oh, we gotta worry about those lawsuits because that is something to worry about from them. It'd been very nice if everyone would have known the truth from the very beginning with the MOU. This not having the facts, misinformation has caused a lot of discord in the community. It's disturbed me. It's disturbed people that I'm friends with. And we gotta have the truth. I think because of the fact that the MOU are gonna cut me off. I think because of the fact that the MOU are gonna cut me off two seconds early. It's different here. Anyway, if you work in town during the day, you're not gonna see the bats until they come out at nighttime. No bats in the daytime.
Yeah. You're cutting people off two seconds quicker than what says.
I can't see that. I can see that. So, that's what I'm going with. So, we'll work on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary. Just to correct that, you know, there's no rocket science to scheduling three-minute conversations. I'm happy to let someone, if they're in the middle of their remarks, continue on. And that's why I say, please try to wrap it up. That implied in that is you have extra time, just to be reasonable. That's all I'm looking for. Because there's a lot on the agenda tonight and those minutes add up pretty quickly. Okay, other, is that it?
Yes. No, Mr. Mayor, we have another speaker.
Okay.
We have several more speakers. The next speaker is Mr. Udi Fishman.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, good evening. I'm gonna save you a minute here, Mr. Mayor.
No worries.
My name is Udi Fishman. My wife Jane and I have lived at 599 Elm for the past thirty-two years, raised our children here, and we treasure the peace and quiet of our beautiful neighborhood. That's near the corner of Auburn and Carter. Our house shares a backyard property line with the property at ninety-seven West Carter, which since May has been rented out on an almost daily basis as a short-term Airbnb. It is booked thirty out of thirty-one nights in July. It has booked most nights, about eighteen so far in August. It's booked solid in December right through Christmas. Police were called to an out-of-control party on July fourteenth that Jerry referred to that had gotten posted on social media. There were reportedly over seventy people stretched out along Auburn. There were people in their cars drinking, smoking marijuana on the streets. Trash was thrown everywhere, including into our backyard. The cleanup went on well into the next two days. I wanna stress that that was obviously an outlier and it was a very egregious situation. But there have been others, not at that level, granted. But loud noise and music on multiple occasions. Just as problematic as these, I call them egregious situations, is the day-to-day, the continuous daily noise of a pool party for multiple families on an every-day-and-every-night basis. We cannot open our windows in the evening or enjoy our backyard. One solution that other cities have adopted is to restrict Airbnb-type rentals in Sierra Madre to twenty-five or thirty nights a year. That enables responsible homeowners to rent out on occasion but changes the fundamental economics. It makes it economically impractical for someone to run a in-keeping business full-time, all year. They'll make more money finding a permanent tenant, but they'll still have twenty-five, thirty nights to do as they wish with their property. It's a quiet residential neighborhood. We wanna keep it that way. I hope we can count on your support to create a code update that will protect our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Linda Bunch.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council and city residents present. My name is Linda Bunch and I live at 561 Elm Avenue. And my husband Craig and I have lived here for twenty-five years. I'm a neighbor to Udi Fishman and I'm well-aware of the property at ninety-seven West Carter that is currently being offered as a residential rental on Airbnb. I'm aware of the noise and commotion and actually, I am one of the people who called the police at twelve-thirty in the morning after the night of July fourteenth. I did a little research on Airbnb and there are fourteen Airbnbs in Sierra Madre area. All but three are offered for between one and three hundred dollars per night and for about one to three guests. The three more expensive rentals, between four and seven hundred dollars per night, two of them say for six guests. The one Airbnb that we have been talking about on the corner of Carter and Auburn says for fifteen residents. Now, this property has four bedrooms, six beds, and for fifteen people. So, obviously, it's being advertised to bring in as many people as possible, which can double. The money that you make can double the nightly rate from five hundred to a thousand dollars a night if you actually document that you're having that many people. Okay, so my suggestion, as with Udi, my suggestion as a start for a code for the city for Airbnbs is to put a cap on the number of guests that an Airbnb can have per night at each property. And it seems like the normal cap has been, at least the ones I've looked at, were about six people per night, per property. And then, if there's bigger properties, that can be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bunch.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Shirley Lee.
Good evening. This is my first time here. I am here to also comment on short-term rentals, specifically ninety-seven West Carter. This is a house that was constructed to be and is being operated pretty much like a hotel. Like others have said, it's set up to sleep fourteen. And the owner constructed the house to be a party house and have never lived in the house. So, as you can see, this person set this up, this house up to pretty much make fast money and not have the intention of just renting out spare rooms to make a little extra money. So, with no restrictions or regulations on short-term rentals, I can see houses all around Sierra Madre turning into little hotels rather than, because like Udi says, the economics favor this kind of setup. I mean, why offer a long-term lease when you can make five times the money on short-term rentals? So, like Udi and others have said, please consider limiting the number of days that a un-hosted property can be rented out. And I and most other people do not live in Sierra Madre to be subjected to noisy out-of-towners that cares nothing about the surrounding neighbors. And so, this is why I think Sierra Madre desperately needs a short-term rental ordinance that will ensure that short-term rental activity respects the character of the neighborhood. It's a quiet neighborhood. And Sierra Madre needs an ordinance to support neighbors' right to the quiet enjoyment of their home and property. And this disruption in our neighborhood needs to end and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Lucy Gode.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmen, councilwomen also. I think Rochelle answered my email I just sent today. I'm here also to echo the annoyance and concern over this Airbnb. There's one particular problem that is on the corner of Elm and Carter. I'm on 555 Auburn, not Elm and Carter, I'm sorry, Auburn and Carter. When I come home at night, there are large vehicles parked on the corner. I thought there was an overnight parking restriction that we're not allowed to park our cars on the residential streets. There's parties. Our dogs bark because of the parties because they think something is going on. It's a real problem. So, I'm here also to ask your help in coming up with some kind of ordinance or solution to this problem. You know, I come from San Francisco where this was a major problem and there they restricted the number of days and the registration program for the renters. I'm sorry, for the less, the owners of the property, should I say. I think there are other solutions to this problem. For example, the renters could be, or made to sign an affidavit. This is something they've done up in Lake Arrowhead in some communities. They can raise the deposit to several thousand dollars or something like to that effect to keep these types of parties from occurring. There's many solutions to this. And to the neighbors here, I can, there is a way to complain through Airbnb, through Airbnb neighbors. So, I would encourage the people here who are experiencing this to do that as well as in the egregious situations to call the police. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the final speaker card is from Deb Sheridan.
Good evening, council members. Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. You voted five-zero at your last council meeting to put the initiative on the November eighth ballot. This initiative will allow Sierra Madre residents to vote on whether to put the monastery property into the Hillside Management Zone, resulting in the twenty acres where New Urban West wants to build forty-two large homes circumventing our zoning laws, destroying over a hundred trees and wildlife habitats in the process, saying they should be able to build the way they want rather than following our general plan and building codes in this high-fire zone. Thank you for that vote. But what I find highly disturbing is that you also voted five to nothing to issue a rebuttal argument to this initiative. It is apparent that none of you talked to the petition circulators nor any of the nearly fifteen hundred resident signers. Instead, you chose to listen to the eleven mostly non-resident threatening, "We'll sue you if this passes." You were all so wrong in your reasoning. One, you said resident voters didn't know what they were signing. My estimate is that circulators spent five to ten minutes answering questions, giving literature to explain the petition. Several asked us to wait while they got a spouse and/or adult children to also sign. Two, you said, "This is what will result in extra-large homes, what we at Preserve Sierra Madre have fought against all these years." As chairperson Mayor Goss, I especially take exception to that statement. Please request city attorney Gary Gossian to explain where he got his numbers of so many housing units and sixty-five hundred square feet. Should this initiative pass, any developer would have to go through the exact same process as New Urban West is currently. You asked about houses on smaller lots to the south of the monastery and whether they are part of the Hillside Management Zone. Why would you even ask a question like that? If you actually read the Hillside Management Ordinance, you would see that it applies to large properties abutting the mountain. I am asking you, council members, during August, when you are not meeting, to please do your homework and I thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards.
Any emails?
There were no emails received on this topic.
Okay. Anything non-agenda?
Nothing on non-agenda.
All right. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to presentations. First presentation we have tonight is from the Sierra Madre Community Foundation. I believe Cher Frank Moore is with us tonight and Member Greg Harmon. And it looks like.
Oh, thank you.
Others?
Yes. All right, Mayor Goss, council members, city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the Sierra Madre Community Foundation. Mayor Protem Garcia has served as our foundation's chair. So, he's quite familiar with our group. A quick fun fact, he remains one of our most active followers on Instagram.
I got a badge to prove it.
My fellow board member Sue Spears is here with me tonight, replacing Greg Harmon. Sue's completing her ninth and final year on our board and we're so grateful for her service. She's the brain trust of our organization and thank you so much. Okay, so who is the Sierra Madre Community Foundation and what do we do? We're celebrating twenty-two years of service to the community. Our nonprofit status comes into play in a couple of ways, which I'll talk about in a second. It's worth noting that one hundred percent of the funds raised stays local. One hundred percent of the dollars raised stays local. We're focused on our mission to maintain Sierra Madre's local charm and sense of community. I'm very proud to lead a terrific board of volunteers, all of whom also are active in other local organizations. We do have a few open board positions. We encourage residents to read about the roles and responsibilities of board membership on our website. So, big picture, we provide grants to support local activities, events, and programs. Organizations apply for grants on our website. The board meets every other month to review grant requests. To fund these grants, we raise money. Our annual whiskey and wine event has turned out to be the largest and most high-profile fundraiser, thanks largely to board member Heather Young, who graciously opens her home to the community. I know many of you have attended this wonderful event, sampled a couple of nice whiskeys, and we thank you for your support. We also rely on individual donations. A few residents have recently committed to some large annual gifts, which allows us to forecast and plan accordingly. Also, we are pleased to share that we have received a grant commitment from Supervisor Catherine Barker's office to help with funding efforts. Finally, we also serve as the fiduciary agent for other community groups. Sue will talk more about that in a second. So, as you see on this list, many of our grant recipients are affiliated with the city. These grants provide additional funding sources, which is so critical to the success of these activities, events, and programs. I'm happy to share, at last week's board meeting, we approved a grant to support the city's Halloween Happenings program. As you see from this list, we support many of the library's annual programs, including the bookmark contest and my personal favorite, the Walk This Way Story Adventure. Our support of city-managed activities includes the repair to a bridge in the canyon and landscape assistance at Sierra Vista Park. Of note, we provided a grant to the Sierra Madre Senior Meal Program during the height of the pandemic. I'll turn it over to Sue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Happy to be back. In addition to providing grants to the city of Sierra Madre, we also have multiple other grant recipients that we've done over the years and that's listed here. For the Creative Arts Group, we are a regular funder and sponsor of their Imagine Art Program. We've done that for over eight years. Also, we helped them with their classroom lighting system and they just did a drip system because they were doing outside classrooms to protect it from rain. We supported the Trailhead Project up for the Fletcher Fund, the Trail Maintenance Fund. Our local schools, Alverno, the elementary school, the middle school, Gooden School. We've sponsored some robotics programs, e-textbooks. We helped Alverno with their, when they were doing their expansion of their field. Sierra Madre Cert, we've helped them with their storage as well as their supply vehicle. The cemetery, we just supported this year, their benches, but previously for their memory wall in the back. The Playhouse, we've sponsored over many, many years. The air conditioning, we just did a, a large grant for their ADA, for their access to their doors. Um, thank you for, uh, council member Parker's talking about ADA access, and that's a big thing for the library, or for, excuse me, for the Playhouse. Uh, the Imagine Art, uh, Imagine, um, Live Concert and Theater that they've done. Uh, we're sponsor, obviously, if, or not obviously, but the Post Office Landscaping Project, the Rose Flood Association for the Search and Rescue. We, uh, we helped this year also with their, um, uh, giving the equipment for their new, uh, research or, uh, rescue vehicle, as well as security for their cabinets. And then also for Sierra Madre Thrives during the, uh, pandemic as well. Frank mentioned, um, one of our big ways that we support the community is partnering with other groups to help them with their, uh, fundraising and their programs. And they are, they, by partnering with us, that allows them to utilize our nonprofit status to collect donations and then fulfill their purposes. We actually do have one special project with the city of Sierra Madre. It's Environmental Stewardship Project, and James Carlson is the coordinator of that. And, um, that's to get information out about environmental, uh, needs in the community. Uh, Fletcher Trail Maintenance Fund is ongoing. The Goldberg Park Fund is, is one. And then Conexburg Staff Library, uh, it's for library staff training. Um, that's a very unique program. The Sierra Madre Fourth of July Committee, uh, when people donate to the, uh, Fourth of July Committee, those funds are deposited with us, and then we distribute it under the direction of the Fourth of July Committee. Friends of the Arts, uh, Sierra Madre Public Library also has a special project agreement. And then, uh, the last one is the Sierra Madre Post Office Landscaping Project. So, we're helping, partnering with those, those groups so that they can fulfill their special things for Sierra Madre and, uh, contribute to our community. I'll turn it back to Frank.
Okay, so ways to donate. Supporters can make one-time donations or set up monthly recurring donations. These donations can be directed to the Sierra Madre Community's General Fund, or they can be designated to support one of the special project agreements that Sue just talked about. Supporters can also add to the, add the community foundation to a trust or living will. We are very fortunate to have two endowments, which generate annual income and preserve the principal. We'd like to thank Councilmember Krebs, who created a birthday request on Facebook, which encouraged her friends and loved ones to donate to the community foundation on her birthday. Very nice of her. Supporters can also identify the community foundation when shopping on Amazon. Donations can be made via check or via our website. Getting the word out, thank you again for this wonderful opportunity today. We really appreciate it. So, the foundation has been hard at work getting the word out. We've built out a very good social media program on Instagram and Facebook. We post twice a week promoting our events as well as supporting our grant partners' activities. The results, on Instagram, we have garnered three hundred and seventy followers in little less than two years. We're very proud of that. We attend all the big community events and encourage people to engage with us by following the community foundation on social media or providing an email address to receive our new quarterly newsletter. To further build our awareness, we sponsor the Mount Wilson Trail Race Kids Fun Run, the Fourth of July Firecracker Fun Run, and this Sunday, we are very proud to again sponsor the Summer Concert Series Cash Up Front. So we hope to see you all Sunday at the park. Thank you again for this wonderful opportunity to share what's going on with the foundation, and Sue and I would be happy to answer any questions.
I'll hand to my colleagues here and see if we have any.
No, I, I, I just want to comment, just, you know, thank you to the foundation. I, I think as a council member, we're aware of some of the work that you do, but when you see a list like we did tonight, I mean, it's quite impressive, so thank you. And now I am a follower on your Instagram.
Well, putting this PowerPoint together, we were also impressed, just, you know, we're kind of going through it, and you put it all in a, in a document, like, wow. This, uh, hopefully, we're making a difference.
One question, Frank. When's the next whiskey tasting? Is that, did you say this is fall?
Uh, no, it'll be in the spring, uh, winter, spring, we have not decided yet, so. Uh, but we will certainly keep you posted.
It's definitely gonna be an annual thing.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great.
It's a wonderful event to raise money and to raise awareness of the foundation.
Cool. Thank you for your presentation to both of you.
Sure, thank you.
And then we have a presentation from our library. Yay.
Hello, all. Thank you, Mayor Goss and City Council for having me. This is the library's annual report, and no action is required by city council. I'd like to take this time to introduce myself. I am Leila Regan. I am excited to take on the role of the Sierra Madre Public Library City Librarian. I was previously the Youth Service Librarian from two thousand nineteen. This past year at the library has been full of changes. From our former city librarian Christine Smart moving out of state in October to a secondary COVID closure in January and February, to adjusting programming around the pandemic. Throughout it all, we have done our best to remain the heartbeat in this wonderful city. The pandemic taught us a lot about the capabilities of the library as more than a building. Through the, though the building reopened in April twenty twenty-one, much of our programming remained a hybrid of in-person and online. While some programming has switched back to in-person, other programs like Pajama Storytime have found a permanent home on Zoom. The transition back to in-person programming was not a sudden one. When we switched to virtual programming in twenty twenty during the height of the pandemic, we were quick to change course. Returning the course to its natural flow has been done slowly, safely, and with the health of staff and the community in mind. This included moving some pro, some in-person programming to outside, like our Storytime, school class visits to the library, teen book club, and craft it when possible, while other programs returned inside, like our three D printing workshops and sewing machine basics. We even kept some virtual that are normally in-person. It was our second year of having our gingerbread jamboree as a take-and-make-on-Zoom program. Everything was done with state, county, and city guidelines in mind. It was wonderful to be able to bring back some of our programming that took a break during the pandemic, like our annual bookmark contest. Thank you to all who attended. It was great to keep, um, some programs that developed during the pandemic, like Music and Mindfulness. We had over ten thousand attendees for our five hundred programs this past year. The secondary COVID closure from January twelfth to February twenty-second was thankfully an easier transition than expected. Many patrons were already familiar with how to request book bundles, library items, and obtain services. The library was able to keep some scheduled programming outside, and we were able to fully transition our one-book-one-city programming for The Midnight Library by Matt Haig to virtual events. This switch was incredibly successful, thanks to our understanding community and their willingness and dedication to working with us regardless of the situation. We worked really hard this year to bring back our programming and services. We partnered more with community entities like the Fire Department for Fire Prevention Week, local teacher Dana Ritchie, thanks to support from the Sierra Madre Community Foundation, amazing programs supported by the Sierra Madre Civic Club Women's Club and others, and volunteering programs like, um, Sierra Madre Environmental Action Council, Local Authors, and more. We hope to continue to build and grow community partners over the course of the next year. Here's our annual statistics. This year is in blue. The previous year is in orange. The charts shown are for total circulation, which includes items checked out from the library in person or online, patron count, the number of people who have come to the library building, and total programs offered. After reopening last April, you can see how much our circulation has overall increased. This year, we had over a hundred thousand items checked out compared to last year's of eighty-four thousand, which is still very impressive, given that we were closed for some of it. Though we did an amazing job of keeping our circulation up while we were closed, they do not compare to the numbers of when we are open. Even with our doors open, in June, this past June, we saw the highest foot traffic, traffic all year of over four thousand people coming into the door. Thank you to everyone who has returned to the library. This past year, we had over forty-two thousand visitors. So what is next? We are so happy and excited that the library building and lot will be receiving some much-needed attention. Thanks to Assemblymember Holden's office, the mayor, the city council, library board of trustees, and the Friends of the Sierra Madre Library, the library was allocated ten million in funding for a meaningful improvement. This will entail adding a building expansion, bringing the building up to ADA and seismic requirements, and improved green space around the library. While this will require reexamining and visioning what was already approved by city council for the library, we are so happy that we will be able to do more for this community. The library has focused this last year on bringing back our programming and services to the best of, to best serve the Sierra Madre community, and we are grateful for the support we have received to be able to continue our services. We cannot thank this community enough for their continued support. It has been my overwhelming pleasure to serve this community as the Youth Services Librarian and to continue to provide as the new city librarian. Thank you. This concludes my report. I am happy to take any questions from city council.
Any questions?
Comment?
Yes, please.
Uh, so congratulations on the appointment to the city librarian. We're thrilled. Um, uh, just kind of going back to my onboarding as a council member. Um, it was with, uh, then librarian Smart. That was at the height of the pandemic. And I, and I just recall walking into the building. You, we hear that all libraries are closed, but seeing book stacks of personally curated books, sewing machines ready to go out to residents, uh, all kinds of programming going on. And I'll say that librarian Smart at the time gave a lot of kudos to you, um, bringing forth, uh, a lot of the online presence and thinking about alternative programming. And it's my understanding, we were always, we were a model nationwide for, for how to deal with the pandemic and how to keep a library open. So thrilled to have you as a librarian, and thank you for the annual report.
Thank you. Um, I will make a quick comment on that, just that I did recently talk to, um, a parent, and she told me that they moved, they moved here, um, right before the pandemic. It was a very chaotic time for them. It was not a move made willingly. And, uh, they were so grateful for the library. She, she grabbed my hand, she's like, "Your, your programming and, uh, the fact that the library was available during the pandemic is what pulled us through and really made us part of this community," and that meant so much to me. And it just happened, so that's why it's fresh in my head.
Any other questions, comments?
Welcome, and congratulations. We're thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, city librarian Regan. That brings us to our consent agenda, and we have taken item F out of it. So would you like to go over that for us? Madam City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the city council this evening, there are six items for consideration. Item A is consideration of Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-three approving certain demands. It is recommended that the city council approve Resolution twenty-two fifty-three. This resolution approves payments of city warrants in the aggregate amount of one million, six hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Also, so, Sierra Madre library warrants in the aggregate amount of eight thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and six cents. And finally, payroll transfer in the aggregate amount of four hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. And this is for the fiscal years ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and as well as June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Consent item B is the purchase orders over forty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three, and it is recommended that the city council approve purchase orders for forty-five thousand, over forty-five thousand for this fiscal year. Consent item C is the budget book for fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three, and it is recommended that the city council receive and file this budget book. Consent item D is award of the janitorial service contract for fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three, and also through fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four to reliable building maintenance. And it is recommended that the city council award a janitorial services contract to reliable building maintenance for an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Consent item E is consideration of award of purchase of six-inch C nine hundred PVC water main for future water main replacement projects in fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three. And it is recommended the city council approve the purchase of an overstock of a six-inch C nine hundred PVC water main from PPI Pipe America, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Consent item C has been pulled for discussion, and that leaves us with the final item on consent. Second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-nine, amending chapter five point three six, Commercial Photography and Motion Picture Filming of Title V, Business License and Regulations of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. And it is recommended that the city council conduct a second reading of ordinance fourteen fifty-nine by title only, amending chapter five point three six, Commercial Photography and Motion Picture Filming of Title V, Business License and Regulations of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So let's go over these items, uh, A through G minus F. One at a time, see if there are questions first, uh, for staff. Uh, item A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just, uh, just a quick, quick question. Um, first, just a quick comment. I know it's not time for comments, but, uh, when we see general warrants getting in this, uh, neck of the woods, we tend to go through the, uh, the check register to see what's going on. So we had, we had a couple of big purchases. Uh, one was a big payment to Big Ben, which is our, uh, contractor for, um, for the water main replacement, also our insurance payments. But the question is, um, thinking about Big Ben, I know we've been delayed. It's kind of been a longer process, uh, through the canyon to get that water main replaced. I know we're, we're creeping into the, well, we're in the next fiscal year, but my question is, um, how has that been going? I have, we haven't seen a change order, so it's my assumption that we haven't, they're not going over budget. Um, but just wanted, if we can get an update on the Big Ben, uh, project this, this time.
Mayor Protem, I'm happy to provide an update, and as far as with the change orders, I'll ask Director Semino to come up. Uh, but as you know, the, the pandemic has caused many delays. Some of their staff, um, being sick, some supply chain issues have delayed the project, some, uh, weather concerns early on. Uh, the project is nearly wrapping up. We expect in the next couple of weeks, the project will, will be complete. Um, the, the PO for the, the purchase was carried over into the next fiscal year, so the current project is not going to affect next year's, uh, water main replacement program. And, uh, Director Semino, uh, take on the question on, on the, uh, change orders.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the project doesn't have any official change orders, as in making the project larger than it, than it was. There's been some changes on the project, but nothing is resulting in a higher cost to the project. And that, and that's just, in order to get this project done, it is a very difficult project. You know, in the canyon, for one, is difficult, but, uh, another, we were replacing two very big, um, lines that, that go to the east side of town, one for Zone Two and the other for Zone Three. So it made for a very difficult project, and, um, uh, we're looking forward to ending. Uh, there was some negotiation in it. Yeah, I'm sure they're, they're happy to. But there is some, some parts that, that we're gonna leave off at the end, um, that we're gonna make up for it in, in other projects this coming year. So one, one of it is like capping off the, uh, the trench with the final, uh, asphalt on Sturtivent Drive. We are going to, uh, design Sturtivent Drive, which we need to improve the sidewalks there to meet ADA standards. Um, so we thought we would add that to our street project this year and hold off on Big Ben, uh, making that final cap over that asphalt, which we would just be grinding off when we do the street project. So, uh, there was some, some things that, that went on there, but the project will not go over, uh, cost.
That's good to hear. Generally, when, when things take longer, usually you have to, uh, open the checkbook, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And thank you for the update on Sturtivent Drive and, and the rest. Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, questions on item B? C?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I noticed that we ran a deficit last year in our general fund, our overall fund, because of a one-time expense of infrastructure. I think infrastructure is really important. I'd like to understand what our plan is going forward, what are we looking at? I'll be honest, it makes me a little bit nervous to be running deficits. We've had some, we've been really fiscally sound, and it's just, to me, it's this really challenging trade-off between the need for deferred maintenance and the need to do that and keeping our house in order. So it'd be helpful to know, kind of, what are we looking at in the twenty-three, twenty-four and beyond, kind of our five-year plan for capital projects?
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers. Just to be clear, we do have a balanced budget. We actually have a small surplus. When you see a deficit, that is capital improvement projects that we use reserves to fund. Currently, we have quite an extensive list of capital improvement projects for infrastructure needs within the city. City staff within the next five years is going to prioritize those projects, and will begin introducing those projects to city council. So we are still in the process of developing that five-year capital improvement plan, and we plan to use those reserves to satisfy those needs.
And can you tell me a little bit more about the reserves, kind of like, and on the, we did have a balanced budget. That's an important point. Where are we with respect to our reserves? Because our reserve is kind of our rainy day fund, and so can you tell us a little bit about kind of where we are with that and kind of how big it is, how much we're depleting it, a little bit on that?
I'd be happy to begin, and I'll ask our finance director to come up and give you more specifics. But what I do want to point out is that what we are working on is creating a reserve fund balance that is specific to the general fund, that meets our minimum obligation requirements, and then creating additional accounts for infrastructure and for ongoing maintenance, so that we can identify that we have the reserves needed for emergency purposes, and we also have reserves for capital improvement projects. But if Director Hillary is here, she can expand on the other items.
And as, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know as Director Agarola Leon is coming up, I know that this has been a discussion item as to how much reserves is too much reserves and directing staff to ask, how can we identify a reserve that is consistent with our policy and at the same time that we're investing into our infrastructure? And I assume that's part of what the director is going to discuss now, too, but I do know that was part of our discussion and direction given to staff.
Yes, so the operating reserve is set at twenty-five percent of operating expenditures. So that is about, that's about three million. So we have more than the minimum, and that's where we're going to bring it for the fund balance reserve for capital, so we can start using some of that access towards funding capital projects.
Thank you for that information. That makes me feel a lot better. And you're right, Councilmember, we did talk about it, and I'm not trying to dredge it up here. It's just making sure we keep a close eye on it, so I appreciate that.
Director, while you're out there, and I don't have it bookmarked, but could you tell us what our general fund reserve currently is? And that's after we spent, what, three point four million on a new building, right?
Yes, so it's, let's see. That's about nine million.
Nine million. Twenty-five percent is around three million, so we're above our twenty-five percent watermark.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's, thank you, Director. Okay, any questions on item D? Item E? Item G? Here again, I'll open this entire consent agenda up to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have a speaker card from Keith Stevens. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Our next speaker card is Kristen Stevens. Kristen Stevens, Grandview Avenue, Sierra Madre. Good evening. Honorable Mayor Goss, Mayor Protem Garcia, and council members, I hope I got that right. Clearly, I did not get the memo on the Hawaiian. I'd like to know more about that. Maybe it's moot point, but I accidentally sent in a draft article or submission, and if it's giving you some pause or question, please look at the one that I provided to Ms. Aguilar. After writing to the city, the film office, and film liaisons, but being unable to get answers or assistance with filming problems, I started to the document request process. My September twenty-twenty-one request has not been complied with. But during my informal investigation with other residents, I realized my home was not the only one being impacted by filming. I made additional document requests in January of twenty-twenty-two. The one I was provided made it clear there was fraud, and it had been going on for some time. I questioned and brought it to the attention again, the city, the film office, and Alverno. Yet the filming and issues continued without being looked into. It was about signatures and more. I believe my ability to prove that there has been not one, but several instances of fraud should hold some credibility. Our lax film code was partly to blame for the negative impacts because it didn't address the modern-day issues we're having with these newer films and the sizes of the production going on in a residential neighborhood. I think you are addressing that, have been making strides, and basically, here we are. It was never intended that our home be the block captain, but since we own our own business, we seem to be the only ones who won't get fired for showing up or putting in the time to compile what we have submitted. But neighbors have sent things in, neighbors have signed petitions asking for certain things to be considered. Filming still needs to address a few more items that have been negatively impacting homes under the city code for all residents. In trying to explain the process to a new-to-the-area resident, it just made me realize, if it's this hard to explain to this new resident, then it's going to be that difficult to address. It's this, for example, the appeal process. What is the appeal process? No one seems to have seen that. We don't understand. Is it going to be, can one person make an appeal because they don't want, I don't know, something, explosions? Or does it require several residents to raise a concern, because then that means the process does more harm than good? We do feel the city council and planning commission have taken into consideration the various neighbors' communications, but what we are not privy to are the direct discussions between our city employees and Alverno as they negotiate the terms Alverno wants for filming on-site and to be given special consideration. The whole point to addressing the problems with filming becomes worthless.
I'll give you another minute, because your husband relinquished his.
Okay, if one entity gets to waive the code for their individual needs. The residents are not privy to how their concerns might have been misinterpreted or minimized by Alverno during these meetings. This is not supposed to be an Alverno film code. It is a city film code. Please, thank you for accepting our submission. Please take a look at it. A couple of residents were clamoring, calling me today, saying, get down there. Again, we are not trying to stop filming, only mitigate the unreasonable problems our neighborhoods incur and no others do in Sierra Madre. Lastly, I'd like to thank you, Councilmember Parkers. I am an advocate for families with children with learning disabilities and other disabilities. I am a person with a disability, too, and most people just diss it and make fun of it and think it's just, it's okay because they can't see it, that you must be faking it. So I really appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Ken Farthing.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is Ken Farthing. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees for Alverno Heights Academy. Now, the planning commission is currently considering the adaptive reuse of the villa for rental events and for filming, and the commission requested clarification on the TUP ordinance and also the filming permit ordinance in relation to our conditional use permit. The city attorney suggested at the commission's hearing last week that the city council could consider these requests at tonight's second reading. Now, the first one is hours of temporary use permits. The commission pointed out that the council adopted a hard stop on temporary use permit events, or excuse me, filming at ten PM. We don't have a problem with that at Alverno. That's what we currently do. The commission requested clarifications from the council if temporary use permit should also have a hard stop at ten o'clock. And the proposed ordinance does not address the issue, and it's assumed time limits would be determined by staff relying on facts and circumstances of individual applications. Now, Alverno's existing TUP was approved by the city council with events ending and all guests leaving the villa at ten PM. However, there's event cleanup, and it's typically about an hour in length. Now, the TUP recognized that event vendors need time to pull linens, clear glassware, wipe up counter sinks, take out the trash, clean the floors, health, you know, health department requirements. Vendors also need time to take down flowers, decorations, pack up their equipment and the like. The current TUP has all vendors leaving the property by eleven PM with all gates closed to the campus. We believe the imposition of this ten PM hard stop would result in events stopping at nine PM in order to do the one-hour cleanup, and we think that's an unreasonable limitation for both the villa and also if you consider it for citywide temporary use permits. We believe it would have harmful consequences on the rental of the villa and also future temporary use permits. So we're requesting that you clarify that it was not the intent of the council to have all events, including cleanups, and at ten PM. Again, our recommendation is basically the staff would look at these in terms of citywide temporary use permits, and then our TUP, our conditional use permit, would basically address that issue. The other one is the variance requirements. The proposed ordinance for filming, the city staff would approve variances from the ordinance with a petition requiring seventy-five percent approval from occupants of properties within two hundred and fifty feet of the campus. The example given is the use of a variance was when the production company needed additional time to complete their filming. Now, Alverno's a really large property, twelve acres. There are ninety-three properties in Sierra Madre within two hundred feet of the campus. A seventy-five percent occupant approval is an unreasonable burden on such a large property, requires approval from seventy-four neighbors or occupants, as you call them in your ordinance. The practical effect of a seventy-five percent approval would be that no variances would be granted. Now, Alverno proposes that the ordinance rely on a supermajority approval rate, which is commonly found in state and local government legislation. The approval of a two-thirds, or what's called supermajority, sixty-six point six-six percent of the occupants. This is still a high bar, requiring approval from sixty-two of the ninety-three occupants that surround the campus.
I'm sorry, you're running out of time. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I'm finished. Thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration.
Lost track of that.
Mr. Mayor, just by point of order, though, I think we were hearing on the TUP, which is the item A poll.
Right. I didn't want to interrupt him. So all other comments at this time have to be focused on the filming ordinance, not the TUP ordinance, which we are going to be addressing separately after we approve the consent agenda. That's okay. You're allowed to order, but we're good.
We have a speaker card from Lisa Puleo.
Hi, good evening, Lisa Puleo, six seventy-two West Highland. I have one item regarding filming in that Mr. Farthing doesn't think that, or he thinks that seventy-five percent is too much. I believe the residents got seventy-five percent because you've removed any kind of signature process unless it goes outside of the film code. And we absolutely feel seventy-five percent is appropriate because we've lost our signature to approve any film, only the ones that go above the code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have a final speaker card from Julia Fenara.
Okay. I think we're good, right?
There were two emails received, Mr. Mayor, one from Lisa Puleo and the other one from Keith Stevens.
So I'll close public comment on all the items in the consent agenda and bring you back to council for any comments before we vote.
Mr. Mayor, just have one comment regarding the filming. I know that we received a couple of emails, and there might be some other points of question about the filming that can be addressed administratively or by procedure. So I think it would be helpful for the staff to receive those public comments also, to see what can be incorporated outside of the ordinance, as again, as part of procedure.
Other thoughts?
Just a comment on item E regarding the purchase of PVC water main. I just want to say kudos to our city manager, the relationships that he's built. We're getting this pipe ahead of time for the next go-around for a huge discount, thanks to relationships that the city manager and the water department have built with vendors. Because they, it seems as though they enjoy their job over the water department. And that reflects with our vendors, and we get these opportunities. So kudos to that. Building relationships is super important. So we're happy to spend less of our taxpayers' dollars on something like this, so thank you.
Here, here. Other comments? Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda as amended?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries unanimously. Takes this, now, I did not poll my colleagues up here in terms of where we want to insert the TUP discussion. We could do it now, get it out of the way, before we do the public hearing.
We could do that, Mayor.
Let's go ahead and do that. So we are doing the second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-eight and ending chapter seventeen dot eight-eight, temporary use permits of Title Seventeen zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code.
Mayor, so there's a couple of items that we wanted to bring to council's attention. First, the TUP and the filming ordinance were drafted concurrently and to address some similar issues. And what we found is that the TUP does not have a variance, an opportunity for a variance, and it does not show what time events end. So we'd like council to consider amending the TUP to include variants similar to what's found in the filming ordinance and to include a time where events can, where events end, and maybe additional, something in there about noise and limits on noise.
Language, which would be precisely the same as in the film ordinance?
Correct.
You happen to have that in front of you?
Yes, Mayor, with respect to the possible variance condition, the council has one of two choices here. The TUP ordinance is not written like the filming ordinance, because the filming ordinance, if you remember, creates a set of standards. It says, noise shall be X, here's how many days you can do it, here are the times, and there's a number of standards. And if you vary from those standards, then you need to seek seventy-five percent of residents' approval. The TUP ordinance doesn't lay out the standards that way. So the city council has an option. I think option one for the city council could be to create a variance procedure if an applicant requests to have more than four events per year. Or in the alternative, the city council can direct the city attorney to go back and draft the ordinance in a way that creates standards that mirror the standards in the filming ordinance. And then to have a variance from those standards in their totality, as opposed to just the number of events per year. So those are the, I think those are the two options. With respect, and just one clarification with respect to the timing issue, at the planning commission meeting, there was a discussion, at the planning commission meeting with respect to Alverno's CUP, there was a discussion regarding the timing. Now, the city council was clear with respect to filming. Ten PM is the cutoff, I believe, the term that was used by Ms. Hines. 10:00 PM is the cutoff, I believe the term that was used by Ms. Hines was "tail lights", meaning we're only seeing tail lights at 10:00 PM. But there is no time limitation set in the TUP ordinance. Generally, what happens is in a TUP permit, when those are issued individually, there may be time restrictions imposed, but we don't have an, we don't have any time restrictions in the underlying ordinance. So, it's up to the council to consider whether or not they want to impose a time restriction, and if so, does that mean gates close, or, as Mr. Farthing put it, does that mean gates close at 10:00 PM? Or are we going to make an accommodation for cleanup activities that always happen with, that often happen with temporary uses?
So, let's ask, to save, questions only, save comments till we hear from the public. But questions on?
Mr. Mayor?
The question, yes.
City Attorney Gergosian, in your examples of option one or two, when, with respect to a variance, option one is based on numbers, and number two, or number two, if you're, to redo the ordinance, can you explain that, that it's not based on number, it would be based on what?
So, if I were to, if I were to redraft the ordinance to mirror the language in the filming ordinance, then it would kind of look like the area standards we have under the filming ordinance, and the area standards list, for example, total number of filming events per year, their duration, their timing, noise standards, parking standards, street closure standards, lighting, et cetera.
So, not just the number of events, it would include those other standards? Okay. Thank you.
And, and that's just a more detailed set of standards than exists under a temporary use ordinance, because often those standards are there, but they're included in the permit itself, not in the underlying ordinance. So, the question would be, does the council want it in the permit itself and leave that discretion to the director of planning, or does the council want to make that clear in the ordinance?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I'm just trying to go back, this was what, two or three meetings ago, but from, it was my recollection that when a TUP was pulled, didn't we discuss that anything that's not within the TUP would fall back to our municipal code? So, things such as sound and hours of nuisance and those things would, would go back to our muni code?
Correct. All, all the underlying standards in the municipal code also apply, but a time restriction, with respect to noise, that exists, but a time restriction on the temporary use doesn't exist anywhere in the code.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, I have a slightly tangential question. So, when we went through the TUP before, we talked about, there was something about business use in there, and I can't remember the exact language, is, is that, you know, that our code allows for home business use, which is essentially home office use, as I understand it. Considering the comments we've had earlier tonight about Airbnbs, does that, i- i- is there anything, does, does the TUP have anything overlap with use of a home for something other than regular, you know, residential occupancy? Is, is, is that, is it covered by it, or is there some reason that it's excluded, or help me, help me understand, kind of like, would, would, could it apply, or does it apply?
Yeah. Thank you for the question, council member. I, I was having the same thoughts when that discussion was happening during public comment, and I think what you're referring to is that the R1 code lists the allowable uses, and those allowable uses do not include commercial uses. And so, I think your question is, is a short-term rental, the operation of a short-term rental, a commercial use that is otherwise prohibited in the R1 zone? And I think the answer is yes. Now, how to regulate that? Is it going to be through code enforcement action under our R1 code? Or is it going to be through some other means? That's a, that's a discussion to have with our city manager and city staff.
So, if we were to pass this tonight, and one of the residents here went and came in and said, "This is a violation of the code," then we would have to enforce the code and say they could only have four nights of stay in, in a home, and you'd have to notify Airbnb that it's prohibited to do it more than four nights? Or how is that, like, is that, does this pose a, is, does this pose a lot of burden for staff, or is this an opportunity to address a concern that we heard five or six people from?
I, I've never seen a short, short-term rentals regulated through a temporary use permit ordinance. I've, I've never seen it, not to say it can't happen, but I've never seen it been done. So, it, I think if, if that's the direction Councilmember Parkers, that the council wishes to take, I can do further research on that and report back to the council.
Thank you for clarifying my question.
Other questions?
Just to follow up, going back to the variance, you, you mentioned Attorney Gergosian, the, the language within the filming, filming code, and are you envisioning something like a vote of 75%? Is that, is that what you're saying, saying to mirror the language?
Yeah, I, I have proposed language if you'd like to hear it.
Sure. Yeah, please.
The, the proposed language would read something like this. So, after, in the temporary use permit ordinance, we list how many uses are permissible, and I believe it is.
Four in a 12-month span?
Yes, it says, "The use will occur at the property no more than four times per 12-month period." That sentence will be followed by this sentence. "Any additional uses may be approved with the written consent of at least 75% of the occupants within a 200-foot radius of the property." And that more or less mirrors the language in the filming ordinance. The language I read to you, though, deals exclusively with the number of times temporary uses can occur at the property. That doesn't create some kind of variance from other standards like timing, you know, noise, et cetera. So, to the extent that the council only wanted to look at this with respect to number of events and not look at all the other standards, this language may be acceptable to the council.
Thank you.
And, and if we were to, to put language in that, so the planning commission asked for feedback on, on timing, if we were to put language in around timing, where would that occur in the code, or in the ordinance?
With respect to timing, I think I would include it as two, as, as part of, as part of section 17.88.020, allowable uses of permits, I'd have a separate line item for, for duration or timing and provide the clarification there with respect to timing.
So, it would be under number one, which is duration, you'd have another point, so it would be like a C after the, the duration?
Right. It, it could, it could go somewhere there.
Okay. Thank you.
So, or, I'm sorry, it'd actually be probably a three, so, because there's duration, and then there's frequency, and then I think there'd be a three, probably timing.
Okay. So, section B of that section talks about a 24-hour.
Correct.
Use. Would that take place, usurp, or would it be in addition to that?
So, so the, the reason that 24-hour period exists is because the, I, I believe in the commercial zone, or rather, the, in the measure V area, you have activities that happen overnight, like, for example, they, they bring pumpkins to the lot overnight and they stock it for the day. And that also exists because the director generally, or whoever's issuing the temporary use permits, has a discretion to, to determine what the appropriate times are. Now, if the council were to, to determine the appropriate times for when a, the start time and end time, then maybe it wouldn't make sense to have that 24-hour provision in there.
Okay. And we're talking about subsection B to B, or.
Or one.
Rather, one B. And that is, that is specific to parcels outside of the measure V zone. So, that would be not measure V, but V, but outside of measure.
Oh, you're right. Correct. That, that, that is, you're right, that is areas outside of measure V. And again, I think the explanation, that's a leftover provision in the code. It, I believe 24-hour, 24-hour period was already there. I, and I think the reasoning behind that was to allow the director the discretion to determine what, what the relevant times would be in the permit itself.
Are we good?
No, I, I have one more. Hold on. I had it and I lost it. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Do, do we have, for any other use within the city, do we have, I'm thinking of churches and, I think primarily of, of things that are not in the commercial zone, or commercial or industrial zone, so that, that's got to be in residential, so that means institutionals that are in residential areas. Do we have any events that happen there? I'm thinking of things like at St. Rita's or at any of the other churches that, that go late? Do they have, do, do we have permits or anything that go past, you know, tail lights at 10?
Director Gonzalez?
Church and midnight mass.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think what goes through.
I know St. Rita's does have a festival, but it, I do not believe, and I do not recall or seen anything that goes past 10:00 PM at night. There's nothing good and nothing, and I'm just trying to think of, like, I, I, I always try to think of things in context of the city as a whole, and so I'm just trying to, like, do we have, if we're issuing permits, is there anyone else that has permits past 10:00 PM? Not that I'm aware of. Okay.
Director, does, does Lavender Marketplace have permits that go best past 10:00 PM?
They typically end at 10:00 PM. Tail lights at 10. That's what I believe, yes.
Okay.
And just, I, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I'm thinking of something like a midnight mass, but that would only be once a year, and I don't know if there have permits or needed for that.
We wouldn't issue a TUP for that, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've exhausted our questions, so we'll throw this up into public comment.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker card is from Ken Farthing.
Yes, thank you. You know, I think this raises a more fundamental question, is that, you know, in your TUP ordinance, you basically have a conditional use permit requirement for institutional uses, you know, we're grateful for that. But in a way, it, it raises a question, if you have that, what type of facts and customization can occur within that conditional use permit? You know, for us, the, you know, the, the TUP that the city council issued 11 years ago has worked pretty well, in terms of the events, the guests leaving at 10, and the cleanup occurring, it's all done inside, you know, so those are, you know, those are considerations that, again, need to be, you know, weighed, and we think the planning commission is just looking for a direction, you know, from the city council, you know, in terms of, you know, how you would structure something that would be citywide. And again, you know, and I think for us, you know, either, either if it's citywide or if it's based on Alverno, the 10 o'clock where basically everything's closed down essentially means you're closing the event at 9 o'clock, and that's, that's a really early time to close a, you know, like a wedding reception. So, again, we would really ask that we, you know, we basically operate under the existing temporary use permit conditions, so those would be carried over to the conditional use permit. Thinking.
Other quest, or comments?
I have a second speaker card, Mr. Mayor, from Lisa Puleo.
Hi, Lisa Puleo, 672 West Highland. First of all, the TUP that Mr. Farthing is referring to was written 10 years ago, and their behavior has changed quite a bit since that time. So, to create that as a precedence of rules that are made here today, I think it's, it's different because their behavior's completely changed. Second of all, I need the council to know that some of the decisions that the planning commission is making is based on the code, codes that you create today. So, not only is it have to do with the city, but it's going to move forward to any discussion that we have on, on Alverno on September 1st. Lastly, Alverno has stopped their events at 10 o'clock for decades. For them to, to even want to change it past 10 is very difficult for us as neighbors to handle, because partygoers continue there, staying there until well after 10. And so, we were hoping that we'd have a hard close at 10 o'clock, so we can make sure that people are leaving. We've been having trouble having Alverno adhere to the TUP that exists, because people aren't leaving at 10 o'clock. And every time people are there, they're blaming it on cleanup. So, what ideally we would want is 10 o'clock, lights out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puleo.
Kirsten Stevens, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening again. I tell the neighbors we weren't going to talk about this as much as the filming. I would like to say that the CUP that is being considered and discussed was made, actually 2009, and there were some items in that that never made it into it, and now we're watching some of that get dwindled away at, or taken away at the planning commission, which is very upsetting, because people have been following this for so long and, and speaking out and coming to these meetings, thinking, "Oh, my gosh, do I have to do it again?" TUP? I know there was a different discussion about the lights out. We haven't made formal complaints regarding the violations of the TUP, because it's very time-consuming for the residents. We have reached out to the administration. We used to have neighbor meetings, but they stopped those in 2019, and they've just went on about their expansion. Unfortunately, people still want to get heard about the issues that were happening every quarter. So, I hope you will very much just consider the fact that we have a neighborhood like every other neighborhood, and if they get that priority, we would like it too. I don't even know if it should be called priority, but that consideration that things end at 10, because it is a very loud thing. They are now getting to have dancing outside. I don't know how that happened, so we're getting less. We're moving away from what, how this initially started, and we're getting more noise being introduced, dancing on the patio. I'm sorry, I hoot and holler at a wedding, so thank you for consideration.
Any others?
No other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
I think we have another request.
I just would like you to refer.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Julia Fenara, head of school at Alverno Heights Academy. I would just like you to refer to many of the things that we've sent in over the months. One is all of the minutes from the different meetings and the people who were in attendance, and they are also on our website. So, we have had those, and we have been following the rules as far as closing the event and having the people leave, and we do need that time between 10 and 11 for the vendors to leave. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What, when we're talking about vendors, are they taking glassware out, or tables, or what?
Because the vendors come in.
What kinds of potential?
Yeah, the caterers come in, and they have to, a lot of them will be taking the glasses because they've rented the glasses, they've rented the plates, all of that has to be packed up and put away. The other things that have to be taken away because of the, the florists come in, the people that have brought in, the linens, that all happens, so they, they clean all of that up at the end of the night. The tables, everything gets taken away if it can that night within, if it doesn't, then it gets picked up on Monday morning. But they take away as much as they can. Obviously, the DJ's got to pack up, he's got to end. If the music ends at 10, it takes, you know, an hour to pack up all of your stuff, if you've been DJing, your little lights and everything that you've had set up, and as well as all your equipment. And so, that's, it's that kind of stuff that, that gets packed up at the end of the night.
And these events typically begin when?
They normally, we don't usually have any weddings until 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay.
They all come in, they'll set up, the caterer will get everything set up, and about 2:00 in the afternoon, they would, they would be the earliest, probably they would start, unless it's an earlier wedding that ends earlier. But everything ends at 10, no matter what. And it does, I have to say, that we would have more opportunities to rent things if we could go later, so we do, it is hard enough to, to rent and having people end by 10 o'clock, because they don't want to when they're paying, you know, good money for a venue, to have to end that early.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we have another question.
As far as your policy with your vendors, or, or whomever is maybe renting the facility, beautiful facility, by the way. Do you have any language within the agreements that, let's say, I know sometimes there're buffet weddings, but, you know, the plate. buffet weddings, but, you know, the plates have to be on the table by 8:00 because then that gives them an opportunity to start bussing it off, bussing, you know, plates off before 10:00, right? Why wait till 10:00?
Well, yeah, it's not, it's not that. It's not the bussing, it's not the bussing of the plates, but it is taking everything and packing it up in, you know, the truck and whatever it is that they have to take it away. It isn't the bussing.
Okay.
At the end of the night, it is obviously the glassware, and it is because people are, you know, they have their drinks, they have their water, they have whatever, and they have the linens. We're not going to, people have paid good money for the event, we're not going to take the linens away when they're still sitting there.
I understand, so procedurally, these plates and glasses will, by 10:00 presumably will already be boxed up.
The dinner plates, sure.
Ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are, but not everything else, not the silverware, not, you know, because that's still, you know.
I understand. No, I'm just trying, I'm trying to think of-
Right, right.
Where we can-
And they're, you know, they're cleaning up all the food that they've been serving and while they're in the kitchen and people are dancing and everything, that's when they're, they're cleaning everything up from the cooking, so.
Okay, I mean, we're, you know, we're just trying to find ways to mitigate.
Right, right. No, I understand.
Thinking of, you know, a lot of these vans that are commercial, when they reverse, they have beeping sounds, do you have anything?
Not, no, not at, not at night. They are not that big. These are, these are caterers. Caterers usually have much smaller. The people, like we said at the planning commission, and I don't, and you weren't there, but at the planning commission meeting, that they, what happens is that for the big things to come in and get all the chairs and the tables and all of those, those tend to come in on Monday.
Yeah, I did watch the meeting, and I did hear that part.
Yeah, I remember that part. So those are the ones that might beep, but not the ones that the caterers and that the, the DJs are using and things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
No other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. So we have, please.
Mr. Mayor, if we're ready to, for comments and discussion, I'm actually in support of the variance. At first, I didn't want to open this so much, but if we're going to a first, second reading again, I think going to align it with the filming ordinance and having those findings in place as opposed to just the number of events makes sense. And I know at the time, we separated filming and TUP intentionally, and now I'm like, oh, they look similar if it's approved this way, but I think to give direction and understanding to those that are applying for the TUP and it's very clear that those findings are set forth. I also am in support of a 10:00 PM end date, you know, understanding, I've catered before, I understand the process involved, but given what we've heard from the neighbors and those that are impacted, I think 10:00 PM is fair. I think we have that on the filming side, and to look at consistency and standardization, a 10:00 PM taillight is something I would support.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, Councilmember Parkers, please.
So I'll echo the sentiments of Councilmember Ismendi. You know, I do think from a resident's perspective, whether it is film or in a wedding or a photo shoot or whatever it is, it's noise, it's trucks, it's, so I like the idea of having a consistency. We, you know, we hear from a lot of people, they, we're getting all of these issues convoluted, and it's important to have the two different ordinances and have, because they do have different issues, but from, you know, outside the gate perspective, having the same makes a lot of sense. As to the time, you know, my reception of my wedding was from 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock. I got kicked out at 9:00, and it was because I went to a special place and they had special rules. This is a residential area. It is, you know, the villa there is a very special villa. It is gorgeous. If people want to be there, then I think the taillights at 10:00, I think it makes sense. It's good consistency, it, it's, you know, respectful of the neighbors, and, you know, if you've, you've got the special venue, I think that should be the draw for folks to be there.
Thank you, yeah, we're, you know, we're talking about a CUP while, I guess, giving guidance to the planning commission, so this is interesting for me. But as far as, as far as the variance is concerned, I do like that language, if we could put that in, because as I was reviewing the minutes back when the Branstadders were here as well as Megan Malouli, former, I don't know if she was Person of the Year or whatever it was, they came back with a mea culpa, and I feel as though, because they had two more weddings that would have been outside the four. If they can prove to the residents, 75% of the residents, that hey, we've changed the way we do things, we're a little quieter, then they can have those two extra weddings by way of variance. So I do like having that opportunity. Time-wise, you know, I'm, I was in the hospitality business for a little bit, and I understand it, and I was trying to have a conversation with Ms. Fenara regarding that, so I'm a little bit more open to things inside, as long as it stays inside for an extra half an hour or whatever it might be, for cleanup, as long as it's not loud, as long as they don't take liberties with that. But, you know, guests and everybody else out by 10:00, absolutely, but I do have a little, I am open to having some inside the building type of things going on as long as it's quiet, but yeah.
That's kind of exactly where I am. I feel like out, everybody's out at 10:00, but another 30 minutes for taillights, I feel like is reasonable. If it's true that we're not talking about beeping trucks and we're not talking about, you know, tents coming down, large pieces of equipment moving around, the noise should be minimal, but noise is noise, so I think 10, 30 more minutes is about as much as I could possibly support, but we don't have a majority here, so.
10:15.
So two, two questions related to it. So one we, and it's one of the things I forgot to mention, is we didn't talk about kind of the criteria. That's one of the things that's in the filming, is that there are certain criteria, and if you missed, if you want to go beyond those criteria, we've only talked about time, I don't know if there are other things in there that stuff can, that could be the variance on it. And the other thing is, you know, we are, and to Mayor Protem's very good point, is that, you know, we are talking about the TUP and not the CUP, and so I wonder if it makes sense to separate those and to do the taillights at 10:00 for the TUP and to come back and revisit it with the CUP, and as I understand it from staff, that we would do the CUP for a year and have it come back and see how it's going for, within a year. So, you know, this kind of gives us a couple of options. One is, we're focusing just on the TUP here, which I think we should be, and then it allows us to, uses to inform the CUP, and then we can have another by the CUP 12 months from now. Our guests-
The planning commission will, not us.
Well, that's true, yeah, it's a brilliant question. Thank you, that's a great, great clarification.
So that's why they're looking for guidance through this conversation of the, of the CUP. Kind of going back, I am in, I think I do prefer having less restrictions on specifics within the CUP ordinance, sorry, TUP, and having the planning department specialize or tailor temporary use permits to each event, because we can't envision what one event might be relative to another event. So if we're, if we're writing hard code down, we might have some unintended consequences, rather than having the planning department look at things on a case-by-case basis and having each temporary use permit tailored to that individual proposed use, if that makes sense.
So I guess my, my question to staff would be, and maybe it's to Director Gonzalez, is, is there enough guidance in there to know when a variance would need to be granted? Because, because I think you're right, like, I don't want to handcuff them, but I also want to not make it really difficult where they're having to make tough judgments, and they're like, what would the city council want in this? And so that, I want to, I don't want to make it so restrictive that, you know, these are the only, it's these five reasons and that's it, but I also don't want to make it so vague that, you know, someone who's really good at arguing could, you know, you know, any comma or anything like that, not that that would go to, but I just, I want to make sure that, that staff has the right guidance on it. So I'd appreciate some guidance, so we can give guidance.
So, okay, so where we're at, where are we in agreement? Where do we have consensus? We are in favor of the-
Variants.
The variants? Okay, we got that much.
But whether it's by number of events or by listing and identifying out the, I don't know, do we call them findings or?
Standards.
Standards, as we do in the filming, is of question, so I don't-
Well, let's solve that one, see if we can come to consensus on that. I'm good with the standards, to me it's not a deal breaker.
I'm supportive of the standards, and that's what I had proposed as my initial support.
I'm, I'm supportive of standards as well, but I'm very interested in Mayor Protem's because you raised a good concern, you can try to sway us.
No, I mean, you know, we think about these things as economists, these unintended consequences of a decision. The good thing is we convene twice a month, and if something is broken, we can fix it. But it takes a while, it's city government, right? It does take a while to fix things, as residents here will know. So try to get it right. We try to think about things outside of the scope of what normally happens. So, I mean, I can be convinced because of that nature of change and being able to look at things with, you know, newer councils down the road. So I just, I'm always afraid of an unintended consequence of writing something out when things, some things needed, some things need to be seen case by case. Yeah, so the variance were good, time we're kind of talking about, and we talked, also talked about noise, obviously, at a minimum, it has to comport with our municipal code, for me.
I'll note for the council's benefit that if we are going to redraft this temporary use permit ordinance to mirror the language in the filming ordinance, the filming ordinance has two separate standards, one for residential areas and one for commercial areas, and there are also a discussion of other things that the council has yet to talk about with respect to temporary uses. For example, should temporary uses be allowed on Sundays? So these are things that are generally left to the planning director up to this point. So if, again, I just, I just make that clarification to note that if the council does want me to come back with a revised ordinance, it's going to have two separate standards for two separate areas, and it's going to basically almost exactly mirror the language in the filming ordinance.
It sounds like a lot of work, and I was thinking, oh, let's just look at the number. But we also approve the film ordinance with those in mind, so I'm open to asking city man, or city attorney to come back with an ordinance that somewhat mirrors, we can delete things at that point if necessary.
Okay. I know Councilmember Parkers wanted the planning director to come up here, but the mayor wanted to make sure we got where we have consensus, but I would like to hear from the planning director, because I've never applied for a TUP. What is the process and what is considered when a temporary use permit is granted, and what's within that?
So the temporary use permit is simply an application process. As we discussed with, regarding Alverno, Alverno had 52 conditions of approval on the very extreme end, and that was partly determined by the city council years ago. Most temporary use permits, such as Lavender Marketplace, the planning director and staff has the opportunity to impose conditions of approval, and looking at, for instance, Lavender Marketplace, we started conditioning that if there were X number of patrons, that you would have to park those patrons on-site. If they did not have the ability to do that, then they'd have to get a shuttle service. Patrons would have to park in a municipal lot, shuttle service would take them to the site, so that was an added condition of approval. If we see any issues that arise that become problematic, we create conditions and apply them to specific TUPs.
That's very helpful, because as I'm sitting here, like, we're thinking about this ordinance, right? And how do we think about all of those different things and how things change and put it into an ordinance? We can't.
But if we look at what's in the filming, you know, it's number of events, duration, timing, noise, parking, street closure, lighting, notice, and variance. I mean, I assume that's what we're going to be seeing in it, and it seems to me like noise and parking are things, I mean, we've heard parking and noise is an issue with Lavender Marketplace, so, you know, if we're thinking about it from that standpoint, street closure, if you want to close the street, I mean, to me, it, that, I am now less concerned with unintended consequences, looking at the language in the filming permit, recognizing that's what we'll see coming back.
Okay, yeah, makes sense. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director. So where are we at?
Sounds like we may have at least a majority.
Somebody make a motion with something specific in it that we can sink our teeth into.
Sure. I'll make a motion to ask City Attorney Gergosian and staff to come back with revised ordinance to reflect a variance of 75% if certain standards are not met and the standards nearing somewhat, that of the film ordinance, period.
Or it makes sense, right?
I think that's it.
But we're skirting this tonight.
There's time in the film ordinance, 10:00.
Okay, I'll second that.
Further discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, thank you all, that was-
Just so, did you vote against it?
No.
Okay. Okay, I was trying to follow.
I had, I think I had to remind everyone, if they're voting no, to say nay.
Right, okay. I'm just not hearing well tonight.
Okay, so that moves us on to our next agenda item.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, just a question as follow-up. So with respect to time, we'll, we'll discuss that when the ordinance comes back to us?
That's the idea.
Thank you.
And before we move on, I just want to make sure that we, from the dais, do you feel as though we gave some type of guidance for the planning commission?
Yes, I think so, and for the planning commission's benefit, I think the guidance is that the standards should mirror the standards in the filming ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, well, that brings us to public hearing. Consideration of Resolution 22-47 to adopt revised 2021-2029 six-cycle housing element update in the Sierra Mountain General Plan as necessary to secure certification of consistency with the California Housing Element Law from the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Mayor's senior planner, Carolyn, will be presenting.
This air conditioning just drives me crazy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The item before you this evening is for your consideration to adopt the revised 2021-2029 six-cycle housing element update, as well as the comments from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We'll start with the background in case any members of public is not entirely up to date with the housing element. The housing element is the state mandate general plan element that is required to be updated every eight years. We must include the same components as the previous element plus new features required under the new state law, which include an analysis of local ordinances and regulations that impact the cost and supply of residential development, site inventories to accommodate all income categories, site inventory that is realistically and capable supporting the new housing development, and programs to affirmatively furthering fair housing. The Southern California Association of Government Region was assigned 1.34 million housing need allocation in the sixth cycle. SCAG developed a methodology- SCAG developed a methodology and adopted final RENA number and allocated two hundred and four housing units to City of Sierra Madre to be planned for in the next eight years. The minimum housing units are distributed in different income category, and the city is required to provide adequate sites through zoning to meet a fair share of the projected housing need. So, we started the process two and a half years ago when the city held many, many public meetings and public hearings before the city council adopted and approved the housing element update last November. Subsequent to the city council's approval, we submit the adopted housing element to HCD for that agency's review and certification of conformance with the state housing law. And that is the role of HCD in the process of housing element updates. They also get a substantial amount of time to do so. And for that reason, it wasn't until February that we received the letter from HCD identify areas that is needed in our housing element before the HCD will certify it. Staff and our housing element consultant adequately addressed all comments and resubmit the element to HCD for a sixty-day review. On May twenty-seventh this year, city received another letter from HCD finding one outstanding comment. Because the letter was very focused on one comment, we were able to schedule a verbal consultation with the HCD's representative to discuss their comment and propose our resolution and how we address those comments. We provide them with the revised text and receive an informal email acceptance of the revision from the HCD's manager on June twentieth. This is the six identified rezoned sites that the city adopted in the housing element. These sites remain unchanged in the revised housing element. Now, I'll be going through the one outstanding item from HCD's May twenty-seventh letter regarding affirmatively furthering fair housing. HCD recognized that the city has provided contributing factors to address fair housing issues, but require the element to include additional program that enhance housing mobility in an inclusive manner throughout the community. And actions must include specific metrics to target meaningful fair housing results. HCD also stated that the element will meet the statutory requirement of the state housing law once it has been revised and re-adopted. So, in response, the revision includes specific milestones and metrics, such as the city's recently adopted SB nine and ADU ordinances. Both ordinances expand housing options for vulnerable residents at potential risk of displacement due to high housing costs. Element ensure accessibility by adding the needs for continuous infrastructure improvement in the low and moderate household income area. These quantifiable city actions demonstrated that the city is committed to adopt ordinances and make ADA improvements to target meaningful fair housing result. The next sets of comments are from the February sixteenth letter. I'll show the comments in groups and summarize the responses for you. The following revisions have already been reviewed by HCD with no further comments. So, the first set is regarding affirmatively furthering fair housing. On the analysis on integration and segregation, racial and ethnic areas of concentration of poverty, disparity in access to opportunity, and disproportionate housing needs, including displacement risk, HCD is asking the city to compare our data to the larger regional level, such as LA County. So, in response, we have included additional data from the LA County region comparing the city's recap and income level, median household income, environmental constraints, displacement risks, and substantial housing to the larger LA County area. Next comment is on the completeness of assessment on fair housing issues. HCD say that that element should prioritize and prioritize the contributing factors and provide metrics and milestones in city actions that would enhance housing mobility and development of affordable housing choices in an inclusive manner throughout the community. The revision included a complete analysis supported by affirmatively furthering fair housing data and programs that help expand housing options and promote patterns of interspersed multifamily uses throughout the community by adopting the ADU and SB nine ordinances. Element lists and prioritizing contributing factors to fair housing choices and fair housing issues. The next sets of questions are on the site inventory of land suitability of the non-vacant sites. HCD requires that the city must include a specific finding in the resolution stating that the existing uses are presumed not to impede additional residential development, include realistic capacity for the religious institutional sites, and adequately analyze numbers of beds that are allowed for emergency shelter. So, in response, the resolution was drafted to include the specific finding. The revised element include realistic capacity that assumed eighty-eight percent of the allowed density of the religious sites. We assess the inventory shelters in the greater Los Angeles area and remove the constraint by increase the numbers of the bed to thirty. Next comment is on the governmental constraints. HCD sees that not allowing three-story in the multifamily zone as a limitation to achieving the density necessary for housing development. The revised element further clarified that the approved multifamily ordinances allow three-story by right and encourage lot consolidation where the city would allow up to thirty-five feet in height for lots with one hundred feet in width. So, these applies to the multifamily site, the R three thirty. Last sets of comments are on housing programs. HCD require the city to demonstrate our commitment to submit ADU ordinances for HCD's review within thirty days of adoption. Provide analysis of potential governmental and non-governmental constraint and analysis of affirmatively furthering fair housing. In response, the element provided that ADU and the multifamily ordinances were adopted and the ADU ordinance was submitted to HCD for the review within thirty days of adoption. Removing constraints for emergency shelters and providing a table of fair housing issues and actions for mitigation that reach all economic sector. So, with that, summarized the proposed revision that were made to the housing element since its adoption by city council last November. The proposed revisions do not modify, relocate, enlarge, or eliminate any of the six identified housing sites. The expected density for those sites are not modified in any way and no substantive changes are made to the housing policies. Also, the adopted final EIR by city council last November adequately accomplished the environmental impact review necessary for this project. Since there are no additional changes to the identifying housing sites and the expected density on those sites, and no substantive changes are made. So, we are optimistic that this is something HCD will certify and accept, but of course, we'll have to adopt the revision first. So, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the revised housing elements and with the statutory requirements of the housing element law and direct staff to submit the revision to HCD. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Senior Planner Lynn. I just wanted to comment, somebody up there at HCD just for our city went through this entire document and found problems and brought them back to us, and thank you for your hard work to get that fixed. I'm just amazed that such things exist, that such and I just can't tell you how much I admire you guys for how much you put up with. And you think you have something nice and hiding a neat, nice bow and put together, and then we, it's amazing. So, well done. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, is the, not having gone through one of these before, this is such a pleasure. Is this length of comments, this quantity of comments and the tone of comments typical of a housing element?
So, this is uncommon in the past cycles, but for this round, the sixth planning cycle, all other cities are going through the same review by HCD. Just some statistics, for LA County, we have eighty-nine cities, only eight of them has certified element.
So, they're reviewing the other eighty-one of these, but they're probably a lot bigger.
Yeah.
And is it, are there other cities that are getting feedback of being higher-resourced and less ethnically diverse and pushed to have a higher standard because of their resources and ethnic diversity? That you're aware of, I know it's, you know, you are working here in Sierra Madre, so I'm asking you to speculate a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any other cities' comments.
Where I'm trying to get at is, you know, is this, are they are they pointing towards us, are they pointing towards other cities? Is it, I'm trying to just wrap my brain around, you know, how they're implementing this overall, and just to understand how we respond.
Yeah, so from our feedback, from our housing consultant, she's getting those similar comments for other cities as well, that they're asking more and more data comparing to larger regions instead of our surrounding cities or San Gabriel Valley area.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing done, we'll open this up, it is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment. Expecting much? Nope, looks like we're going to strike out on public comment tonight on this agenda item, so I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Can I get a motion in support of this?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
We just have a moment of discussion just after.
Absolutely.
I just, you know, I'm glad we're moving quickly on it because if we wait any longer, who knows what else they're going to come back with? And some of the language, the reason I asked the question, some of the language in here, you know, I see the reaction there, Councilmember Marasmane. I mean, it starts getting me nervous about, you know, the limitations on height, the diversity, I mean, we, you know, I know we've got seven years till the next one. Maybe we have a year or two to rest on it, but this worries me about what's coming down as the next one.
This is the nature of government in the state of California, two thousand twenty-two. It's local government, kind of, it's local government, but not really, it's kind of local government kind of by marionette doll. So.
Thank you, sorry.
I'm sorry, but we all feel the same way, it's very, there are some things in here that are obviously uncomfortable, but if we don't do it, then we don't get certified. If we don't get certified, then the fines come rolling in and we get bankrupt, so there's that.
You know, I'll just comment that, as Councilmember Parkers probably remembers, this, after we were elected, one of the first things we did was we met with the planning director and Karen Warner to understand what we were looking at. There was a long session that we had to understand this, and now we're sitting here over a year and a half after the election, and we're still dealing with it. But it'd be nice to put a pin in it because it sounds like they like what they're hearing, and hopefully, once we vote, we can say goodnight.
Okay.
To this.
Done, yeah.
You feel better?
Yeah.
No.
I don't either.
Mr. Mayor, I do, you know, just echo your comments. I just commend the department for going through this as many times as you have. I saw the red lines and the details that you went through. I do want to thank you for addressing the things that we are shaking our heads at, but it's something that doesn't always go appreciated, so I just want to express my gratitude.
You're here.
Yes.
See, we have a motion on the table, seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. On we go, do we need a break? I'm not getting a huge, all right, we'll just keep going. Discussion item, Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-four, confirming the tax rate for lighting and maintenance district number one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Mayor Annalise Konoski will present, and if I may, if I may add that this will be her last presentation with the city.
What?
She was the recipient of a fellowship to a very prestigious program, I believe it's the
CORO.
CORO, and former Mayor Harabedian, who also was a fellow there. So, we're really sad to see her leave, but we're really happy for this great opportunity.
Congratulations, that's amazing.
Thank you for the introduction as well, Mr. City Manager. Very excited and also very sad to be leaving. But, you know, I'll get into the assessment district stuff, which has just been hovering over us for the last couple months. So, before you this evening, our documents revising the tax rates for the Santa Anita Lighting and Maintenance District, this is district number one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. This district was created in the early nineteen-sixties and is an ad valorem district, and funds are limited solely to be spent on lighting systems. This means that each parcel is charged approximately seventeen cents per hundred dollars of property value. And while assessment revenue has increased with housing costs, the cost of lighting maintenance has remained relatively stable, which has meant that we've had a really big disparity between revenue and expenditures, and we currently have a five hundred seventeen thousand dollar surplus that can only be spent on street lighting systems. So, as directed by council, staff has explored multiple options to address this surplus, including dissolution, creation of a new assessment district, issuing refunds, or a community facilities district. Staff concluded that initiatives to create new districts when accounting for the variety of benefits Staff concluded that initiatives to create new districts when accounting for the variety of benefits and the area that it would encompass would be cost prohibitive and difficult to gather sufficient votes in order to get it to pass. Refunds also bring concerns of equity in that we're returning funds to, for example, a new homeowner that is getting tax refunds from previous homeowners who have paid into it for many years. So, dissolving District One and transferring the surplus funds is the recommended procedure. So, for example, if we have that five hundred seventeen thousand dollar surplus, just, you know, simple napkin math, two hundred thousand dollars towards a landscaping project that had been considered for many years towards the Santa Anita medians. If we considered twelve thousand dollars annually to budget for landscaping maintenance, tree trimming, which is currently not allowed under the district, in addition to lighting maintenance, it would take about twenty-six years for these funds to be expensed. And as discussed with our finance director, this also does not take into account any potential interest earnings off of what we have in that five hundred seventeen thousand, so that could potentially extend that lifetime as well. So, should the council choose to do so, the process would be as follows. The city council would approve resolution twenty-two fifty-four, revising the levies to be set at a zero-dollar charge for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And then, following the completion of this one year with the zero charge, surplus funds can be transferred into the general fund by resolution, as we did with the lighting districts in downtown, that was assigned specifically to the benefit of that area. And then, council would be able to then formally begin the procedure to abandon District One following the transfer of surplus funds. So, it is recommended that the city council approve resolution twenty-two fifty-four, direct staff to prepare for the transfer of surplus funds and dissolution of District One beginning in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for another excellent report.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And then, thank you, Analyst Konoski, for your report, and I am very sad to see you go, but I'm excited for you, as I've been cheering you along the way for the last year or so. My, my questions regards to, how is this gonna be recognized in, with respect to accounting? I mean, just to ensure that's really earmarked for this district, because it's no longer a dis, or we're looking at dissolving it as a district, how, how is that gonna be recognized? And how will future councils and staff be able to identify these dollars exclusively used for this lighting district?
Sure. So, we do have, A, we have, you know, records from these meetings as well. But when it comes to the general fund, our director would probably know the exact mechanics. But when she does create the general fund in the budget book, they have line items that go specifically towards assigned. So, when we would present the resolution transferring surplus funds, specific language in it says, shall be transferred to the general fund, assigned towards, and then you would specify the use. So, she knows when auditors come and in the budget book as well, that it is assigned solely for that use.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, you had made reference also to interest on that. If interest is generated as general fund as a whole, are we, how are we going to, or will we ensure, how will we ensure that the interest is also following that line item?
To be quite honest, I don't know the exact mechanics of how that would work. I did have a discussion with her, and she essentially said that that is possible. Again, the exact mechanics, I'm not sure how it's specifically assigned.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor? Analyst Konoski, congratulations as well. How long, in, in the downtown lighting and maintenance district, we, we have a surplus. How long is that surplus going to last us? Is it estimated to last us?
For the downtown, I hadn't done any specific calculations. That was a bit of a different, different consideration, because with that specific campaign, we had one year where we were completely discounting funds for the first year, and then an additional fifty percent off. So, I think that was, at the top of my head, around two hundred fifty thousand dollars total off of that seven hundred that we had. The budget for that district is also significantly larger, because it considers tree trimming, parking. I, yeah, I would have to crunch the numbers.
But it's not twenty-six years.
It's not twenty-six years, no. But that, again, is the creation of a brand-new district, so it's self-sufficient in terms of its funding going on past that.
Do we have any other funds within the city where we've got something locked up for twenty-six or thirty years?
None that I'm aware of. I would look to our city manager.
If I'm not mistaken, this is the last of the districts that we would be disbanding, and there would be no further districts.
And, and I'm just thinking more broadly, I mean, we, we've got this, this pot of money that, that we're going to say can only be used for lighting and maintenance in this, in this one area. I'm just trying to think of, you know, I, I, there's a theme here, is I'm thinking about precedence and, and all of that, that when we do this, is, is this, are, are there similar things in other, in other parts of, of the city where we've got a, a fund that is dedicated with, with a type of funding for such a long period of time?
Councilmember Parkers, that's definitely something that we can look into and report back.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I, I don't know, it's kinda similar to Councilmember Parker's question here. I don't, I don't know how procedurally a, a lot of this works, and Councilmember Arizmendi alluded to this. You know, I'm just doing some quick math here on my phone, and we're talking about a, a certain group of residents that may not live there anymore, and they paid their taxes. And, you know, thinking about the equity and distribution might not be a good way to do it. And I know we have an attorney at the dais that's gonna drive them crazy, but, you know, we, we think about perpetuities and having something locked up and going into a perpetual state, right? Funding something forever. You said twelve thousand dollars is, is the current cost to, to maintain probably the, the landscaping. If we have a net three percent return, given inflation and return, that equals about four hundred thousand dollars that we would need just locked up forever. And it would pay for this forever, and I think that's, this, it's a small enough piece of, you know, pile of money that we could lock, I feel like we could lock that up, and it could take care of that area into perpetuity. That's what I'm trying to get at. So, I'm okay with that because of the size of the fund and who paid for, who paid for that, who funded that. But I don't know that we can do that. We're not getting three percent in our life, we know that. So, it won't last as long as, as forever. But if we could, if we could have some type of segregated account, it will last a lot longer if we're, if we have these interest payments and then we're just pulling off a little bit of the principal at a time. It won't last forever, it won't be a perpetuity, but it will be, you know, around longer than we are. So, I, I'm, if we could form something like that, I don't know if we can. Maybe it's a question for the city attorney or finance director, but if we could, I think that would be great.
There, there is no pro, there is no prohibition, Councilmember, on creating some kind of financing vehicle that finances something in perpetuity, so that, that would be permissible?
Unlikely we will get into perpetuity. We are, we are seeing interest rates going up, as you know. But they do go down sometimes, too, so, we hope.
Other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and throw this open to public comment. Not expecting a stampede tonight on this one. And we'll bring it back to council. So, you wanna modify this?
Is, yeah, I'm, I'm not looking to modify, but...
I, I'm not looking to modify, too, but I, I think it's interesting points that are made with respect to interest and, and thinking about that. But, you know, for the intent of the resolution, I, I'm supportive of it. But it would be interesting to, if we can get back from staff, some thoughts on managing it or understanding procedurally how that works, and if it can self-sustain forever and ever. Three percent, that's funny, Count, Mayor Proton.
Is that a motion to approve the resolution?
So, well, I did, I'll take it just a quick, so first, I'm, I'm really glad, this is something I've, I've wanted to, to focus on, and I'm glad we're, we're dissolving it, I think that's really good. I think it's important that we do think about it as the people who have paid into it, although I think the point is, many who have, who have paid, who have gone away, paid into it for a long time and weren't gonna see any benefit from it. I love the rule against perpetuities, you know, first time working on contract law, I had a lawyer tell me, you're never gonna run into this, and here we are, running, it, it's not the same thing, I recognize that, but it's, it's coming up. And, and from that standpoint, I'm just a little bit conflicted of it. I'm not, I, I think we go forward, and I'm in support of, of where we are now, but locking up that type of money for, for a really, you know, for, for perpetuity, it, it, again, it, it makes me, is that the right thing we should be doing, long-term? So, I, I'd love to kind of like, what is fair, what is equitable? I- is, is this the best use for it? I mean, I love the idea of, of redoing that area and maintaining it and taking that money that, that, that those residents paid into it, fantastic. Ten, fifteen, eighteen, twenty years, something like that, that seems right. But after that, just, you know, after twenty years, we'll have almost full turnover in that area, the benefit's been there, so... You know, I don't know that we need to do, to, to handle this now, maybe we can kick this one down the road, but it's something that I think is, it's gonna come back to, to, to either us or a future council. And so, maybe it's a nice thing for a future council to have to deal with, because it's more money than less.
Why not?
Yeah. So, yeah. So, with that, I'll make a motion to, to approve the, what are we, what do we actually, is the, the resolution twenty-two dash?
Fifty-four.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item. Discussion consideration of the bid award for Miracle Playground Sierra Vista Park Playground Fitness Area. This is gonna be a fun one.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm glad that we're presenting at this last week of the month, of July, you know, earlier was declared as our Parks and Recreation Month, and how parks make life better. So, our city council some time ago had directed staff to solicit proposals for the replacement of the Sierra Vista Park Playground, as it is past its useful life and in need of, of parts which were increasingly becoming very challenging to replace and to acquire. Staff did complete site visits with vendors and received three proposals for the playground as well as for a fitness zone near the basketball courts. So consequently, the Community Services Commission did review the selection, and this evening, we are bringing forth a recommendation to city council. The three playground providers include Miracle Playground Sales, Great Western Recreation, and Dave Bang Associates, with bids for a turnkey redesign and build-out of the playground area. In addition to the Sierra Vista Park Playground, the vendors were also asked to provide a proposal for the inclusion of a thirty-by-thirty rubber surface area to include fitness equipment. I do have briefer, more, much more brief illustrations if you'd like to see, because I know that we included copies of the full proposals in your emailed packets. Miracle Play, Miracle Playgrounds came in as our, as our lowest bid, that is for six hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine, with eighty-nine cents total. That's including the playground as well as the fitness area with a shade included. Great Western came in second at seven hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety and forty-one cents. And Dave Bang offered two options, one at eight hundred and ten, nine sixteen, with twenty-five cents, and a second option at four hundred and thirty-nine, nine hundred and seventy-two, with seventy-four cents. However, no fitness area was included. The project will include demolition of the existing equipment, excavation and grading, the installation of the brand-new playground equipment, including ADA accessible components and accessible pathways, also expanding the play area and new surfacing. All three are experiencing shipping delays due to supply chain issues, with Miracle having the longest delay. However, we, staff does not see that as a significant impact, being that we would be likely starting the construction within the first quarter of the calendar year of twenty-twenty-three. As it relates to warranty, the playgrounds now are selling base components, and, and the models are supported over several decades. So, for example, an exact model may not be available, however, other slides would fit. That was one of the issues that we ran into with the Sierra Vista Park Playground. Such moving parts have a, a one-year warranty per the industry standards across the board, and the posts, for instance, would be a one-hundred-year warranty. Green, Greenfields, who works with Miracle for fitness equipment, have also been rated for their excellent warranties and replacements. As it relates to the financial review, pending the bid award approval from our city council, the project would be managed by the Public Works Department, at which time, an agreement will be established accordingly. Miracle Playgrounds is also contracted through Sourcewell. The city, Sierra Madre works with Sourcewell, which is a cooperative purchasing service that streamlines the procurement process for agencies by helping to evaluate proposals as part of their RFP process, and then providing ready-to-use contracts. The fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget does include the eight hundred thousand dollars through ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, funding for this playground project. Staff recommendation, so pursuant to the Community Services Commission meeting of June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, it is recommended that the city council award the bid to Miracle Playground in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for the proposal, including play apparatus and fitness equipment, rubber surfacing, integrated shade, demolition, site work, and ADA accessibility. Alternatively, the city council may request additional information from staff. And lastly, the city council may provide staff with alternate directions. And thank you, I may take any additional questions.
Okay, thank you for that excellent report. Do we have questions?
A quick one, there's, there's a, a giant, I think it's an oak tree, right in the middle of that. Now, the renderings didn't show that, what, what would be the impact, if any, on, on the, the, the tree in that area?
So, in speaking with our Public Works Department, the, the consideration that is, if the tree is to be removed, then we would be working with somebody like our West Coast Arborist or such to have that tree removed to allow for the playground equipment to be placed.
Was, was there any discussion about impacts to the tree in any of the proposals?
Slight discussion, they did basically ask what the city's direction, the take would be. And for most, they did, and I believe it is, it was included in our email packets, that they did do the renderings without the tree in place. So, you know, again, the discussion did involve that if, if there was an issue, the impact would basically be addressed, being able to have agency come in and remove the tree, but there would be no detrimental impacts.
I'm confused by those last two sentences, that the agents would come and remove the, the tree, and there'd be no detrimental impact.
So, so they built, they, they designed the renderings without the tree in place. So, they could come and have West Coast Arborists remove the tree to allow them to replace the playground itself. If we need to remove the tree, in speaking with our Public Works, it can be done.
And if, and, and what's the DBH on that tree? Do we have any idea? Maybe Liz Carlson would know.
Is it Mr. Carlson or Mr.?
Yeah, and, and, and so, would we, so let me just ask a couple of questions, try to round it out. So, would we be subject to our own tree ordinance on it, and how many trees would we have to replace if we had to remove that tree?
Sure, sure. The, the tree in question is a western sycamore, a plantinus racemosa. It is growing at a very angular direction over the playground. So, any, so the removal of the tree, like you said, would require the mitigation per our tree protection ordinance. It's probably about eight to ten trees that will be planted.
Other questions?
Seems so petty after a discussion of a tree.
But looking at Miracle with the color palette, is that what they're, they are proposing? Or are we, are we looking at more kind of earth tones, something not as loud?
That is what they are proposing.
Okay. I guess my question would be, because that tree's near and dear to my heart. Is there a way we could move the playground away from the tree? There's a lot of park there. Maybe Director Samino could give us a thought on that.
We'll pass it on to him.
Thanks for that question. When we were there considering the replacement of the playground, we looked around and in that footprint is what we were concentrating on. And that's, you know, that was the purpose of that. We have the pavilion that's to the west of it. To the south, we'd be taking up a little bit more of the park. So we were just thinking of staying in that footprint. The tree is a sycamore tree that is prone to have the shot bore insects in it. We're not sure that it has it now, but it does, it does grow in that angular fashion and, you know, how it leans over the playground, it does look pretty ominous for us at the current state.
So there's not enough room to build one adjacent to it, but not under the tree?
I don't think it would fit too well. I mean, it is a recreation park, you know, it is a playground park, so to say. And I think if we moved it anywhere else, we're pretty much taking away the other aspects of that park as an open field for soccer and everything else in that park.
Director Samino, kind of keying in on one of your comments. So the fact that it's growing angularly, does that pose a threat of the tree breaking and falling on the playground? Or is it?
I mean, all trees have issues that are unseen until there's an issue. I wouldn't say that those, those kind of sycamore trees do tend to grow in that fashion. There are sycamores that will grow straight up, but some that grow out sideways. So it has been growing there for multiple years in that fashion without a danger now. As we were speaking too, we do have a major water main that runs down between the pavilion and the little pool. And then we also have the line that runs from well five, well six out in the park up to our pump house. That's kind of in that area and we wouldn't want to cover it with, cover those water mains with the playground also.
Got to juggle a lot of stuff there, apparently.
Yeah, it is an old area of town.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director Samino. I think we'll open this up to public comment now. It's late in the evening.
Mr. Mayor, there was one email received. It is from Councilmember Creed, who is not in attendance this evening, but we told her we would read it during public comment.
Good, thank you.
And so Councilmember Creed writes that she strongly supports the proposal to replace the playground equipment at Sierra Vista Park, given the condition of the current equipment and the amount of use that playgrounds get, that the playground gets from the children in our community. The Miracle design and bid seem great so long as we have comfort that Miracle is dependable and does good work. Further, I'm glad we are able to use ARPA funds to finance the purchase and installation of the equipment.
Okay, thank you. So what's your pleasure, colleagues?
So I had three, three people voting at my house, looking at the agenda packet. And they actually, the preference, actually, maybe four, my wife did chime in. They said probably the preference, the number one would be option two as far as kind of the play structure, given our, given our family. And also, I really do like the design of the workout area. It's a little different than what you typically see. But I will, and the color's better. But what I will say is that in light of the comments by Councilmember Parkhurst during his inspiration regarding the Americans with Disability Acts, Act, when I look at option A, it looks like it's a lot more inclusive as far as, as far as accessibility for individuals. I look at that little boat and it looks like there's a ramp that can accommodate a wheelchair. There are things here and it tends to be a little more contiguous with the path. And I feel as though this playground would be a little more friendly to those that are differently able. So because of that, and the price, I think I am leaning toward the recommendation of the Community Services Commission with Miracle. And I do like the fact that we're using, we can use ARPA funds for that.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Any other comments?
I just, the one, like, I love it, I love the design. I love, you know, I support the community services. The trees just, it's, you know, we've worked really hard to try to preserve trees everywhere within the city and it, that, that's, that's the part that's just, it's, it's really, we've got ARPA funds, that's all good. I just, I just, like, if there's a way to save that tree, you know, I mean, do we know how old it is, Lewis Carlson? Ballpark?
A real ballpark would be sixty or seventy years.
Yep. I feel the same way, I feel the same way.
I'd be willing to make the motion like, that provided that they could do, maximize the ability to try to save the tree or something like that, like really send the strong message is that it needs to be replaced. I love the idea that it's modular, I love all of that. It's just, the tree is the only thing that's giving me hesitation.
I have the same feeling, I love, I love the project, everything about it. But that tree, I mean, I raised my son at that park. I've many, 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 many afternoons under that tree. And not to, not to mention Little League and all the fun we have there. So it's very hard to give that up.
Mr. Mayor, would there be a way to consider either a not to exceed or a contingency for saying, yeah, we support Miracle and a playground that would consider keeping the tree in place? And again, I don't know if a not to exceed is possible or a contingency. So is, well, maybe that's the question. Is that, is that something that can be, can be considered with an approval to say not to exceed with, or again, a contingency to say that we're in support of this in a way that can save the tree?
Mr. Mayor, we, we have plenty of time to have an arborist come to take a look at the tree and give us a professional opinion. Maybe it could be substantially lifted from that side of the tree. Because as you know, it's a multiple trunk, so it has three or four trunks to it. We can have professional arborists come take a look and see, you know, what it would take. And even, you know, his opinion, if we did allow it to be above the canopies, if that, you know, would be able to keep both.
We lost another really large, mature sycamore during the twenty-eleven storm nearby that tree, maybe within fifty feet.
We lost a beautiful oak tree that was right by the back entrance to the Recreation Center around that timeframe. I think we, we didn't lose it to a storm, it did die, whatever reason, but it did die there. Yeah, the trees in that, in that park, you know, as we all know, the park's been there since nineteen twenties time. I think I remember pictures of the twenties when they were building those rock walls. The park's been there for a long time. Those trees are reaching the ages that we do have to keep a good eye on them and consider them because it is a park with children playing and all that too. So we will have an arborist come take a look. And if there's anything we can do before that construction, we will, we will consider it. And if some substantial, maybe we bring it back to council to get your thoughts on it too.
Director Samino, is one of the concerns that the demolition of the existing playground will hurt the root system? Or is it just that they can't figure a way to spin it, condense it, whatever, to leave the tree there with the?
A lot of it could, a lot of the construction could affect the health of that tree. What you wouldn't want to do is if the tree's reaching its end-of-life timeframe and then you go and interrupt the roots, you know, we could be like speeding up the process. So, yeah, the construction would be something to consider and then the weight of the tree itself too, the growth of the tree. I don't know. We can ask an arborist.
Given that, is there a way we can still award Miracle at this time? Or is the idea to wait for an arborist evaluation or assessment?
We could make, we could, we could support this tonight with a contingency that an arborist review the tree.
Yep.
And then maybe, depending upon what they find out, we'd have to come back and reassess it.
The plans could be adapted, they could be changed. Obviously, we'd be shrinking the project if anything, you know, to be under the tree. So it wouldn't be anymore. So if you awarded it tonight, we would just be making some changes to the, to the plan itself.
Okay.
Good with that.
Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to remotion?
Would it be moved to approve consideration for Miracle Playground Sierra Vista Park on the contingency that, is there a contingency? That we, we have an arborist come out and look at the sycamore tree that is being proposed to be removed and Miracle Playgrounds will make best efforts to consolidate, move, or amend the site to preserve that sycamore.
Nice.
Second?
Did you get that? If you've got that.
That was a long motion.
On video.
Okay. Oh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you to staff for your flexibility and patience with us. And that brings us to our final agenda item, which is to review and discuss a subcommittee draft argument for the ballot measure that we approved last meeting.
Mayor Deputy City Manager, City Clerk will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the city council's July twelfth city council meeting, the council voted to unanimous, voted unanimously to submit the citizen initiative to the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election. And council also adopted two resolutions that evening, resolutions twenty-two, forty-three and twenty-two, forty-four. Twenty-two, forty-three allows the council to submit an argument opposing the initiative. And Resolution twenty-two dash forty-four authorizes the city council to submit a rebuttal afterwards. And so the city council selected a subcommittee consisting of Mayor Goss and Councilmember Erizmendi to prepare a draft argument. And so this evening, the city council is convening to discuss the draft and to provide feedback and direction to the subcommittee and to also provide direction on a proposed rebuttal. The argument is due to the city clerk's office by August nineteenth and the rebuttal is due to the city clerk's office by August twenty-ninth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. So we did provide, we did create a proposed argument against the initiative. And you've all seen it. I think the, I guess my preference on this would be that maybe every member who wasn't part of the subcommittee could maybe share some constructive advice or criticism for us on that initiative, on that argument. And then Councilmember Erizmendi and I could then reconvene outside of council and put the finishing touches on it and submit it. We could also do that and have a special meeting sometime in August for you guys to come back and approve our final draft as well.
Mr. Mayor, question? So how do we handle the rebuttal? Because rebuttal, as I heard, is due August twenty-ninth. We're not scheduled to meet before then. So I, it's a process question maybe to Clerk Aguilar or to, excuse me, Deputy City Manager Aguilar. What are our options with that? You know, do we have to have a special session anyway to handle the rebuttal? Or could we handle the rebuttal? What are our options in handling the rebuttal?
The rebuttal is intended to rebut the argument submitted by the proponents. And so that is due to the city clerk's office by August nineteenth. It would be difficult for the city council to write a rebuttal before the proponents submit their argument because that's in essence what the rebuttal would be rebutting. Those become public on the nineteenth and at that time, the city council would see the argument by proponents and would be able to prepare a rebuttal. And so the city council could provide the subcommittee direction on, in advance of that or in anticipation of that argument. But without knowing what the argument will be by the proponents, it would be a challenge to properly write an effective rebuttal at this point.
But doesn't the city council have to write the rebuttal? Like, I'm just wondering, like, do we have to have a meeting, you know, between the nineteenth and the twenty-ninth? Is, I think that's it, you know, we have to have a meeting in a subcommittee that meets after the nineteenth and then we have the city council to write the rebuttal and then we meet and approve the rebuttal?
The rebuttals can be signed by up to five of the council members. The resolution that was authorized by the city council at the last meeting, twenty-two, forty-four, authorizes up to the five of the council members to sign it. The council could choose up to five, but, or just the subcommittee to write it, to sign it. If that's the council's pleasure, you could also schedule a special meeting in between the nineteenth and the twenty-ninth to draft or wordsmith or prepare an argument. But the work being done leading up to that special meeting, if the council chooses to have a special meeting, would have to be done by less than a quorum of the council members.
Mayor?
Yes.
City Clerk Aguilar, isn't it also the case that the city council need not draft the rebuttal itself? That it could choose not to draft the rebuttal and have members of the community draft a rebuttal for your consideration and possible inclusion on the ballot?
That is correct, City Attorney Garagosian, thank you for bringing that up. The, the argument or the rebuttal, excuse me, does not have to be drafted by the city council, although the city council is, gets first preference on the rebuttal. There could be organized members of the community that could also write a rebuttal. So if there is another entity who wishes to write a rebuttal and the council does not write a rebuttal, then that would be considered.
Well, my thought on this all along was that we would, the same subcommittee would write the rebuttal. But we could also use the process we're using now to inform those of you who want to sign on it the way we did this time, where we could have a meeting where you could sign off on it. Would be a special meeting, wouldn't probably take more than half an hour. Or you could just entrust us to do that, you could also do that, right? We can just write the rebuttal and post it. And then you'd have, then they would have an opportunity to come down to City Hall and read it before they sign it, right? So if you saw something about you didn't like, you didn't, wouldn't have to sign it.
That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah. Isn't that what we did on the UUT?
I'm trying to remember, I don't remember.
Pretty sure we did, pretty sure we went down it.
All members did come down to City Hall for the UUT.
Well, I did write the rebuttal on that, but.
It was, it was signed by all the council.
But it wasn't done via meeting?
It was, the council meetings during that time used to happen in April. The elections used to happen in April and so the recess wasn't an issue. The summer recess wasn't an issue at that time. And so they were, the council was able to agendize those discussions.
For the rebuttal, I'm okay with, actually, with all the options. If the subcommittee are the only signature, signatories, if we meet for a special meeting and all five of us can potentially sign it, or if even a community group that gets engaged and wants to write it. Given that the city council Given that the city council would have preference with their rebuttal. But I'm open to all of it.
Well, how should we proceed then? Should we assume that we're going to be doing the subcommittee for the rebuttal and that we will want a meeting or not want a meeting?
We've, we've moved into discussion. I think, I mean, I don't know if we follow, but, but, and the reason I bring that up, not, not to be pedantic, but I believe we have comments from our good council member, Krebs, on it. And I think, you know, unless there are other public comments on it, I'd love to hear what she has to say to form the discussion.
Absolutely right. Okay, so we're done with questions? So, I'll throw it open to public comment. Anybody would like to come up and address this issue?
We have one speaker card from Pat Alcorn.
I was hoping we might hear from her.
Yeah, we also have one email, and then we also did receive Councilmember Krebs's comments on it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Pat Alcorn and I'm a Sierra Madre resident. Glad you're all looking so well tonight, considering that you've all been thrown under the bus by the, some of the other groups in other media. So, it's been said that the council is biased towards the Meadows development and that you expressed your personal opinions last meeting regarding the initiative. And that, and that, and not as a city council member. And that you didn't study the initiative or, and you ignored all of the thirteen hundred signatures. But your thoughtful questions and decisions reflect that you read, you read the reports, listened to the city attorney, and followed the staff recommendations. You, you made the decision as a council, which is what's best for the city as a whole, for all of the residents. To do anything less would be a dereliction of duty. You ignored the accusations because they didn't address the initiative, but the Meadows project was, hadn't, hadn't come before you yet. There are, of course, more than thirteen hundred voters in the city and of those I venture to say have not been following, nor do they understand the initiative. So, thank you for the attention and to clarify to the broad base of voters in the city with your considered decision and opposition. Your refusal to be swayed by a vocal, self-centered group trying to circumvent the planning process for their personal interest is, is great. And I, and thank you so much for doing this. And hope that in your rebuttal, you are able to clarify some of the issues that have gone on. Oh, and as an aside, the initiative changes all of the Mater De La Rosa property. Not just twenty acres as frequently been stated. And even tonight, in public comment, it was stated, just the twenty acres. So, I hope that that gets, oop, that gets in there somewhere. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards. The city did receive an email from Barbara Valturo that was forwarded to the city council and uploaded to the city's website.
And you had something from Councilmember Krebs?
I did, Councilmember Krebs provided her, her comments to the draft. And I can pass those along to the entire council or just the committee?
Up to the entire council.
Okay. And it's just her comments on, on changes to some of the wording.
Mayor, that's good. Although I did to the end. It's the same, it's the same thing, it's just for Jose and Alex.
Yeah, I think she's right on the second one. Definitely need to be more declarative there.
Yeah, when a contracts attorney only has three comments on your wordsmithing, I think, good job.
And so my, my only comment on it, first, the subcommittee did a fantastic job, so thank you for taking the stab at it and, and doing that. So, it, as written, it's two hundred and ninety-eight words, which is fantastic. Except if we want to add the other two, other three council members onto it, that takes you to three oh three.
I guess they count that, don't they?
No.
They, 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 they don't count the names.
Oh, good.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, then, then that solves my issue.
Sorry. Are you talking about for purposes of signature, or are you talking about in the body of the text?
So, so I'm used to initiatives and, and you've, you've got the text and at the bottom it says who, who supports it, right? And so, right now, it's, it's just being signed by Mayor Goss and Councilmember Erizmendi. And so, I, I like what it says, I'm willing to step up and support it. But if, but that seems to throw, you know, my naive understanding of it throws it over the word count.
Oh, Madam City Clerk, it's just, maybe it'd be helpful too, just some of the things that you'd shared with us in terms of writing it and words. And I, I don't know if you had shared it with the rest of the council, but words like Madre is one word and not two words. Acronyms are considered one word. Sorry, I was going to use UCLA, but I might want to use USC in this group would be one word. And not, and not three, so.
So, in this case, Mater De La Rosa Retreat Center is considered one word.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And, and you're right.
The city council is one word?
City coun, and Sierra Madre is one word.
City council.
City council is, I believe, one word, but I would have to double check that. But I know definitely Sierra Madre is one word.
Okay.
So, the names of the cities are one word and, and Councilmember Erizmendi is correct. Acronyms are also considered one word, dates are considered one word. So, if you were to say July eleventh, that's one word.
Got it, thank you.
And then again, for clarification, as we sign it, that is not considered part of the text and the word count?
That is correct.
So, she wanted to, in her first comment, she wanted to ref, combine, I guess she's modifying that sense to make general plan zoning the issue. So, we could just change that, it would just circumvent the general plan zoning recognized by the city council.
I'd.
I don't know if I, oh, go ahead.
I, I'd support it, but it sounds like you had something.
I don't know if that was the intent when I took that first stab, but we can definitely look at that.
Yeah, I think the first sentence clarifies it. It's, it's what was proposed in the general plan, therefore, the zoning is part of the general plan that was recognized by the city council.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think it reads okay, I don't know that we needed.
I like comment number two. And Madam City Clerk, when, when will we know the measure number or the ballot, or the naming of the measure? Is that, is that properly worded?
It's pending the county clerk's office. The request has been submitted to them and we're just waiting to hear back whether or not they accept our recommendation. But I'm hoping any day now. We submitted it almost ten days ago.
And then if it's Measure A, for example, that would be one word?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would love to hear any other comments, any constructive criticism like.
Anything that could be added, detract, deleted.
Point that needs to be added, is there a point that was overlooked? Pat?
Yeah, Pat, what, what was your, your point? You made a, a point.
Twenty acres?
Yeah.
The twenty acres versus thirty-seven or whatever.
The whole property. Right. We do have that, we do have it in the third paragraph, the initiative would redesignate the Mater De La Rosa as non-conforming and restrict. But we didn't, we couldn't, we could add to that, the complete property at the center.
Entire thirty-eight acres or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I like the idea of being specific on the acres, because then it gets really like, you know, because, because what the monastery or what the, yeah, what the monastery is doing is they're looking to divide up and, and, and just do a portion of it.
Right.
So.
Okay, reference to the number of acres, I have that as a note.
Okay.
I think it's right, because it solely focuses on the impact of the initiative. That's what I like.
And that was the intent.
No extras there.
And City Attorney Girigosian, if there are additional comments that council can make to the subcommittee, can they direct that to either city manager? Or is it just limited to the discussion right now?
Unfortunately, it would be limited to this discussion in order to, to avoid violations of the Brown Act.
I, I've, I've read it twice and, and so, you know, I, I, I'm very comfortable with it. I think it's well done, as, as Mayor Potem said, it's focused, it's on the issue at hand, it makes it clear, nice job.
So, we have room to add the acreage of the property? Because we have some words where you've, that you've consolidated.
Yep.
Okay.
And I like Councilmember Krebs's comment number two about, you know, one parcel and one private property owner. I think that that, again, gets into really targeting what, what's going on here.
So, you would add one parcel to that, targeting one?
Yes.
Parcel.
You, you could do either way, either this could not, could not just be perceived as targeting one parcel and one private property owner? Or does this not target one parcel, one private, private property owner? I am, I, I don't have strong feelings.
I like that does, does this not, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, rather than could this not be perceived as, that, it's a little more concise and to the point.
Right.
Add one parcel.
Does this not?
One private property owner. Okay, and keep one private property owner, but add one parcel.
Target one.
Okay.
We have a feeling on, on, like, ill-conceived on, on Councilmember Krebs.
Fits the word count, I think it's a great descriptor.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Where would you put it?
Right before the name of the measure.
No on, ill-conceived, blah, blah, blah.
On this ill-conceived.
Ill-conceived.
On, on ill-conceived.
Okay, I think it would just be no on ill-conceived in the number, right?
Now that we're reading it out loud, I'm.
V, I think he's an article, V, ill-conceived, measure whatever.
Okay.
If you have, otherwise, it's, it's not, it's not make it or break it if you don't include that language.
Right, right, I don't think it's gonna.
I actually think that the ill-conceived would fit nicely in the first sentence as opposed, poorly designed is not, it's almost too nice. I think, I'd like to use ill-conceived somewhere, the ill-conceived initiative? Or do you like this poorly designed?
No. I think that, what if we put both, ill-conceived and poorly designed? I don't know if we're adding too many.
Just feel like ill-conceived has a stronger sentiment and tone to it.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I, I think you're right. I like it. What do you think, Ed?
I'm, I'm on board, yeah.
So, let's strike that.
We can fit poorly designed somewhere else if it fits.
This is good. How about, how about the line smack dab in the middle, does that, it's not too pedantic?
No, I think it's.
Okay.
Illustrates exactly what we're trying to convey.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I think we have direction on this then. So, we can make those changes, should we just make the changes here and get a vote on it? Shall we just do that?
That's, that would be my preference, so we.
Oh, no, 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 well, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, this doesn't require a, well, you can just, the subcommittee can just receive direction from the council, it doesn't require a vote.
Let's, let's do, let's handle that, we'll just receive direction and finish the, the document outside of council.
And then it is due to city clerk by August?
August nineteenth.
And procedurally, let's say, we all, the, the three of us that are not on the subcommittee review this, we can just come down and sign it?
Once the document has been submitted, there is a form that needs to be signed by all, anybody wishing to put their name on it. So, in this case, it would be all five.
And that would be by the nineteenth also?
That is correct.
Oh, so we might want to do it earlier?
And that does not require a meeting?
That does not require a meeting. The document, if it's submitted before August nineteenth, it does not remain, does not become public until August nineteenth. So, you could conceivably submit it before the nineteenth and it wouldn't be public.
I just want to make sure council has enough time to sign.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm glad you raised that, because, because I'm going to be gone, right now I'm planning to be gone the twelfth through the twenty-first, so.
So, the tenth it is?
If you, if that's not.
No, that's, that's my schedule.
I'll be in town in ten.
And then, do we want to then, on the rebuttal, how do we want to handle the rebuttal?
Well, first question is, is my council colleague over here going to be around in that time period?
I'm sorry, it doesn't have to all be signed on the same day.
I'm just talking about writing it with, in the co-subcommittee.
I'm good.
Yeah, because I should be here when I get back from vacation.
If it's a member you're gone, right, councilmembers?
Yes.
So, we can do it, we'll be, we'll be available to work on it. The question is, do, do you want to see it before you sign off on it? If you do, we'll have to have a special meeting, which would be a short one. And that would have to be sometime after the nineteenth.
Right, right.
It's only if we don't agree, we, we would require changes or, or discussion, right? We could.
Well, can you, can they see, is that a violate, that's a violation of the Brown Act if we sent it out to them and we didn't have a meeting, right?
So, it's due on the nineteenth, and if you wanted to.
The first one, yeah.
The first one is, the rebuttal is after.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay, we, sorry.
To answer your question, it, it can't be, it can be sent out for signature, but it couldn't be sent out for comment.
Right, right.
And we could just not sign it.
Ultimately, ultimately, that, that's your accountability.
I, I, I'm, I don't have strong feelings on it. You did a great job with the initial, you, you guys have been through initiatives before. I think probably, I don't know about Councilmember Krebs, but, but everyone else has been through UUT and other ones before. So, you, you know this process well.
Well, I do have a question though. Let's, let's assume that other, others that, that submit a rebuttal.
Hmm.
Um, we understand that we get first right at it. However, would that decision be left up to the subcommittee?
Or we could make it really nasty and leave it up to the deputy mayor, and so you choose. I don't think we want to do that.
I don't think she gets to do that.
No, I don't think, no, I I that's that's why I said it would be nasty, 'cause it wouldn't be what what I would want to do.
So there is a list that, a a priority list, and the legislative body is the priority body, the priority rebuttal authors. If the legislative body chooses not to submit a rebuttal, then it would go down the list of priorities.
Well, my hi- my hypothetical was that a subcommittee drafts the rebuttal, and other entities, other people submit it, and hey, that might be a strategy that makes sense. But who makes that decision as the priority body, if that's the subcommittee? Is that question making sense?
It 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 does make sense, a- and that is the city clerk's function under the Elections Code. The city clerk has the ultimate say as to which argument ends up in the ballot. So that's within the purview of not the city council, but the city clerk.
And the, and yes, that is correct, but Elections Code ninety-two eighty-seven stipulates that the legislative body has a priority, and so if the council, which is the legislative body, submits a rebuttal and there is a competing rebuttal, the legislative body would take preference. Does that answer your?
N- no, because I, let's say that somebody else submits it in, and it's great, and we're like, that strategy probably will work. The city council provides the argument, this other entity provides a rebuttal, and we want to withdraw ours. But I'm just saying that we're not meeting within that time, so.
I I I I would, I would throw out that maybe, you know, our, what would be our standard meeting would be the twenty-third, and we make it a special meeting and make it a short one. I.
To make a decision like that?
I I I think it, you know, I hate doing something during the, our vacation time, but this is an important thing for, you know, for our city, and I think it's worth, it it I, it's worth me taking a half hour, an hour in August to 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 make a thoughtful decision on it.
I'm cool with that. I I guess my 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 thought is I would not cede our authority to write the rebuttal to anybody. I think it's
No.
our job, and I think it's, we'd have the most influence of any potential group in writing a rebuttal. Um, I kind of want to write it, actually.
Yeah, I I think I think we should submit it no matter what. I'm just wondering if something surprises us, and we're like, whoa, that's
Yeah.
that's gonna play well. So, let's, I mean.
Right.
We'll plan on writing the rebuttal and see what happens.
And we could leave the meeting idea open for the twenty-third.
If necessary.
So so then I I I'll ask you from a scheduling perspective, so if if we, 'cause we we're going to see the 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 um, the um.
Argument four.
The argument four, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, I I appreciate that. The argument for on the nineteenth, and then if we have a a noticing requirement, we basically, it's it's seventy-two? Well, what's the noticing requirement for a meeting? Is it twenty-four hours? Is it?
Special meeting is twenty-four hours.
So so you, so we could could make the notice that Monday morning, the twenty-second, 'cause it it it's biz- it's business days, right? It it, you can't, you can't make it, oh, you could make a notice over a weekend.
Y- yes.
Okay, so we could make the notice on Saturday or Sunday.
Meetings on a Tuesday, you could notice it on Monday, as long as it's noticed before, you know, five-thirty or whatever time you select.
And it's five P M. on the nineteenth that they're due to you on August nineteenth.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, well. So we have that in our back pocket if we need it. If we come to the conclusion, we need some direction.
Yeah.
Just don't schedule thing the afternoon of the twenty-third.
Right, right, leave that date open. Enjoy. Okay, so I think that's about all we need to do here on this issue. Um, are there any ideas for future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, I do I do want to um ask staff to look into the short-term rentals.
Yeah, that sounds like a a hot potato.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know.